Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we will begin with our roll call. Madam Clerk?
All right. President Taylor?
I am here.
Vice President Cudell? I am here. Trustee Calvert? Trustee Church?
Here from home with COVID restrictions. Feel fine, but got to wait for the test.
Trustee Nicolet? Trustee Thigpen? And student trustee Victoria Gomez is not here right now. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And tonight, in lieu of our pledge, we're going to have a video of our Spanish Springs Honor Choir singing the National Anthem. So let's go ahead and stand. I'm sitting because I'm hooked up to this machine from my knee. Right, I know it was there. There it is. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, JJ. I think we're only going to give this one more shot so we can see the students if we Thank you for your patience. You may be seated. You may be seated as we begin our meeting. Just as a reminder, I'm going to start doing this before every meeting just to make sure we're all very clear, even though we're excited about changing of some of the guidelines, we're still asking everyone to please wear your face coverings properly, meaning you cover your nose and your mouth throughout the meeting time, the time that you have with us, even when you have a chance to make your public comment. We'd ask that you do that just to continue to create the safest environment that we can. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you again to the Spanish Springs High School Choir. Very nice. Trustee Cato, it's his idea that we show that. And so, thank you. That's a nice touch. I'm so used to, it's been so long since we've had them in person. Anybody, anybody singing in person, so it's certainly a great treat. So thank you to those students. Okay, we're going to go on to our agenda, Agenda Item 1.04, looking for a motion, action to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Vice President Cato, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Thigpen, saying no discussion. All those in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Right, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Trustee Church, I know you're there in Zoom, so if I forget about you, just make sure I hear your vote, and we'll be well out on the lookout for your raising your hand on Zoom, so we can make sure you have the opportunity to ask any questions that you have along the way.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're very welcome. Okay, the consent agenda item, consent agenda item, agenda item number two, these items that are generally routine in nature. Okay, and they are listed here in our agendas, Agenda Items number 0.2, 2.02 through 2.13. And then sometimes trustees have questions about these agenda items and those staff comments if they're, if they have been some, and in this case, we did have a few questions, are included with the meeting materials and also are part of the record. Okay, so I'll begin if any of my colleagues would like to pull any consent agenda item for a deeper consideration. Okay, seeing none, then I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Diane Nicolet, I move that the Board of Trustees approves consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.13.
Second.
Okay, I will. Yep, I will. Got it right here. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded, but I'll make sure we do get any public comment on the consent agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent McNeil, make sure we don't miss anything. Okay, any discussion from our colleagues? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, hearing none, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. It is unanimous. Okay, now we have our general public comment period. We have several of those that have come in between the last meeting and this one. We've certainly received some on today. I remind my trustees, my colleagues, if I should say, if you will, to please pull those up and take a look, make sure we want to make sure that we get the voices of those in the community that have sent in their public comments. For those who are, that are here, joining us in person, thank you for that. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes to make your public comment. This is a general public comment period. These comments should be directed towards something that is not specifically on the agenda, and then as we deliberate and consider each individual agenda item, if you have comments that are specific to an agenda item, we'd like to hear them at that time. However, if you have time commitments or restraints and cannot stay into your agenda item of interest, we'll be called, and certainly feel free to come during the general public comment period only. Okay, that being said, JJ, it looks like you have some public comment, and then in between, as usual, read the names of those who submitted them to us. Thank you.
John Appolito. The Board also received emails from Sulima Padilla, Maria Jimenez, Adriana Navas, Darla Lee, Karen Enda, and Linda Miller.
Thank you, JJ. Welcome, Mr. Appolito. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm a former teacher, and I still have two kids in Washoe County schools. You can find over a thousand of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. I'd like to speak for a moment about the most recent student data breach that happened three weeks ago today. The district does not like to use the words "data breach," so they called this breach "an academic integrity incident," whatever that is. My News 4 covered the story and interviewed the district's CIO. This man is supposed to be protecting the data of 64,000 students. The interview was embarrassing. You'd have to see it for yourself to see how pathetic it really was. The My News 4 story is the pinned post on our private Facebook page titled Protect Nevada Children. Of the four data breaches that we've had so far, this one is different because it was the district who actually caused the student data breach. The district's CIO hasn't said that yet. Two of the student data breaches were caused by school officials. One of the student data breaches was caused by a free ed tech vendor who ultimately sold the entire company to the Chinese. We are still waiting to hear the full details of the most recent student data breach. I'm not sure what's taking so long. If the past is any indication, it will be another whitewash job. Next, I'd like to talk about Infinite Campus, which experts say stores more data about our children than anyone ever has in human history. The following happens mostly without parental consent or knowledge. One, the district can't or won't provide a list of all the data fields in Infinite Campus. Other districts do. Infinite Campus and the district share some of the student data in Infinite Campus with several additional parties. Here's part of an email from the principal at Incline High School. Quote, "Due to technical issues with Infinite Campus, Incline High School will not be able to have one group of students attend two days in a row," end quote. The IT department has about 70 employees. They've shown at least four times they cannot protect our students' data and personally identifiable information. The district pays millions of dollars to Infinite Campus, and now the IT department has allowed Infinite Campus to dictate when students can attend school. What do the 70 people in the IT department do? You can find over a thousand of us on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito. Superintendent McNeil?
Thank you very much, President Taylor. Mr. Appolito, we will be having a presentation on data security at the March 30th Board meeting. Thank you very much.
Paul White. The Board also received emails from Savannah Gingrich, Melissa Bryant, Desiree Barnum, Tim Schaefer, and Lorraine Brooks.
Thank you, JJ. Welcome, Mr. White. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. If you were a fan of the sitcom The Office, you frequently heard the signature phrase of the character Stanley Hudson, quote, "Have you lost your darn mind?" That same question needs to be asked to the entire Board. Why are you wasting time and money on the superintendent's redundant resolution against, quote, "racism and hate" when for years the state of Nevada has had non-discrimination policies for every public school? Why are you allowing the superintendent's attorney to rewrite Policy 1310 to allow the teaching of leftist propaganda on race, sex, and politics as merely multicultural education while conservative opinions on these same issues will be banned as hate speech? Why is the Board not challenging the recent public statement made by the Board President, and I quote, "Being white is an identification too. It's not necessarily negative, but it certainly can be," end quote? Let's change that to a white Board member who would have said, quote, "Being black is not necessarily negative, but it certainly can be." Wouldn't you have demanded their immediate resignation? How about the Board allowing the superintendent's obsessive focus on ridding our schools of, quote, "social injustice and systemic racism"? Can anyone name even one example of either one? Well, actually, I can, but it's not what you think. In a recent WCSD teachers poll, the only mention of social injustice was the pressure put on teachers to pass students who do no classwork. The only systemic racism teachers mentioned was that the students they were most often pressured to wrongfully graduate were minority students. Consider the comment by a district sales spokesperson that WCSD's obsession with race issues is a response to the deaths of black individuals like Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. These two cases have not even gone to trial. The charges in both cases are highly suspect, and this justifies teaching district-wide an anti-America curriculum, distorting history, and promoting paranoia and racism against whites. Our students continue to learn the least of any students in the nation. How long is the Board going to let the superintendent make excuses for not doing the only job she's being paid to do? Not social engineering, teaching our children the academic and behavioral skills they need to have a future.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. White, if I may, sir, you attributed the statement to me that I don't recall making. You email me often, which is fine. Would you mind emailing that to me so I can address it? I would love to. Thank you very much. Who else we have, JJ?
Phil Kaiser. The Board also received emails from Lorraine Brooks, Ashley Esconvito, Darlene Nielsen, Bernadette McElroy.
Thank you, JJ. Welcome, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent McNeil and members of the Board. My name is Phil Kaiser. I'm a high school teacher and the president of the Washoe Education Association. We appreciate the educators have been offered the opportunity to get their COVID vaccinations. It's estimated that soon 75 to 80% of educators will have received their second doses. In addition, considering the big picture nationally in Nevada and in Washoe County, average daily case rate and the test positivity rate are trending down. As we look forward then, it's understandable to ask whether the district should continue with the current model of instruction or change to full in-person instruction. As a veteran teacher, I can say I prefer in-person instruction to online instruction, and since last August, educators have been in-person, daily, at elementary level, and in-person in hybrid model at middle and high schools, while some students and staff are doing full-distance learning for health and safety reasons. Our schools are open and operating. Our educators are working harder than ever to make the best of a bad situation. So what are the risks of changing the model at this point? Let me say that we all welcome the declining COVID rates, but they're coming down from very high levels. Just yesterday, the nation recognized the 500,000th COVID death. Nationally, there are still tens of thousands of cases per day and thousands of deaths per day. So what is the risk moving forward? First, there's the risk posed by the variants or the mutations of the virus. These appear to spread more easily and quickly, causing more infections. There's some evidence that some variants may be less vulnerable to the vaccines that we have. Several of these variants have been identified in the state of Nevada. The impact of these mutations could potentially lead to a spike in cases. Second, consider the percentage of Nevadans that have been fully vaccinated. Today's Reno Gazette Journal reported that number is 5.4%. 5.4% of Nevada's population has been fully vaccinated, and Nevada's near the bottom of the nation in vaccinations delivered. Just in Washoe County, we currently have over 10,000 senior citizens who have not been vaccinated. They are high-risk. We have many educators who have underlying health conditions, so they're working full distance or they're working with accommodations in schools, including plastic shields and distancing. While infection rates are moving in the right direction, the risk is real. Third, remember December. We didn't have enough subs, we had a spike in cases, and we had to go to full-distance learning. The risk is real. We don't want to go back. We don't want to go to full-distance learning where all levels are at home and parents can't go to work. We're doing a good job in schools with requiring masks. We need to make sure we continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Anne Sweeter. The Board also received emails from Michelle Beck, Jessica Smith, Vanessa Van Corr, and Angela Major.
Welcome, Ms. Sweeter. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Why is the Board even considering putting racism and hate into the Washoe County schools' curriculum? This has no business being in our schools. The students you are educating today are the future leaders of our country tomorrow. We are not black, we are not white, we are not Asian, we are not Hispanic. We are all Americans in the greatest country in the world. That needs to be preserved. Students need to be taught the US history, which they would learn about racism and hate, and how far the US has come since slavery was the way of life. What happened 150 to 200 years ago was normal then, but is not normal now. Anyone can become what they desire if they set goals, do the work, and get the education to achieve those goals. This should not be just a handout. They need to be held to a higher standard. They should be taught respect for each other, their teacher, parents, and their country. They should not be passed along to the next level if they did not pass the class, no matter what grade they are in. If they don't pass, they repeat the class again. What an easy incentive to do well. Your friends go to the next grade level, but you don't. I would rather have an embarrassed student than one that cannot read or write or even fill out an employment application. Bring the students up to the level that Washoe County residents can be proud of and deserve. Don't waste our tax dollars on teaching anti-American curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeter.
Bruce Foster.
Thank you for being here.
I'm sorry, sure?
Oh, that's okay. I said, "Welcome. Thank you for being here."
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Just a quick observation, when we were all singing along a patriotic song as we have, I was looking around trying to find the American flag as well as the flag of Nevada. Are they no longer available?
Well, as you know, Mr. Foster, we don't engage in public comment, but thank you for your comment. We'll make note of that.
Yeah, just a question about that.
Thank you.
But I'm not going to really dwell on, I'm just going to utilize the last speaker's as a segue to what I'm speaking on as well. And you probably received all my emails regarding the systemic racism issues that we're all concerned about. And two is, I'm going to reiterate that concern for the Washoe County School District regarding to replace our academics with social emotional learning, and it's just taking away from critical thinking skills, but it could definitely transform the children's core values, attitudes, beliefs, and behaviors. But I also have sent you the 1776 Project, which definitely, which I'm going to read thoroughly. Among the virtues to be cultivated in the American Republic, the founders knew that a free people must have a knowledge of the principles and practices of liberty and appreciation of their origins and challenges while this country has its imperfections, we all know that, just like any other country, in the annals of history of the United States has achieved the greatest degree of personal freedom, security, and prosperity for the greatest proportion of its own people and for others around the world. Those results are the good fruit of the ideas the founding generation expresses true for all people at all times and places. An authentic civics education will help rebuild our common bonds, our mutual friendship, and our civic devotion, but we cannot love what we do not know. This is why civics education, education relating to the citizen, must begin with knowledge, which is, as George Washington reminds us, "the surest basis of public happiness." Let's key in on American privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Shelley Buchanan.
I was expecting a lag in time for me to make my remarks.
Oh, that's okay. Welcome, Ms. Buchanan.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like you to know beforehand that I'm a parent of two students who are currently doing hybrid learning, and then there was a period of distance learning they had to do. That was not our choice. Tonight, the district will present a report showing the astounding levels of absenteeism and course failure among our distance and hybrid learners. When looking at this data, it is imperative that we keep in mind the recently adopted resolution on equity. If we really want to address inequity in our schools, we need to take a critical look at our institutional norms. Unfortunately, rather than adjusting to the challenges of the pandemic, our approach to distance and hybrid instruction largely reflects the rigidity of district policy. For example, although the pacing of instruction was supposedly flexible, too many teachers still feel pressure to push students through the curriculum. Principals still pay parents that the school needs to cover 1.25 years' worth of content, regardless of the high number of students failing. The district also established inflexible online attendance expectations despite the official statement of understanding. Yet for many families and students, these expectations are not attainable. When we have this amount of F's and truancy, this is not just a situation where students and families are being irresponsible or apathetic. We need to look beyond the data and ask ourselves, why is this happening, and how do district policies create this situation? If the district simply tells families and students they need to comply with school demands, we're not really addressing the heart of the problem. The first response should be to ask, what do we need to do to help you? How can we adjust to meet your needs? Modifying instruction and expectations during a crisis is not the same as allowing failure. It's about ensuring that we have an equitable system in place. We need to come up with solutions based on a continuous dialogue with parents, teachers, and students. These solutions should not be a one-size-fits-all. Different students have different needs. Allow for choice. In the district slideshow that will be presented later on, there is only a cursory reference to family involvement. Outside of polling data, parents and students are largely left out of the process of problem solving. If you impose top-down mandates, no matter how equitable you think they are, there will be pushback, and you will not be successful. Do more than just issue online surveys. Create a variety of reoccurring town halls throughout our district, and listen more than you talk. If these conversations reflect the diversity of our county, people will feel free to have an open and honest exchange that leads to real progress. Teachers, families, and students have the answers you are seeking. You just need to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
That's all I have for this item.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, we're going to go on to Agenda Item Four. Presentation, discussion, and possible action to provide direction related to current and proposed legislation during the 2021 Nevada Legislative Session based on the approved 2021 Washoe County School District legislative platform to include support of optimal K-12 public education funding, support of student and staff health and safety, promotion of academic success and equity for all students, support for educators, and providing a community-centered approach to decision-making, as well as updates to the Washoe County School District's Legislation Assembly Bill AB 57. This is for possible action. And before us is our Director of Governmental Affairs, Ms. Lindsay Anderson.
Thank you, President Taylor, Trustees, Superintendent McNeil, Lindsay Anderson, Government Affairs. I'm here today just to give you a brief update on the Nevada Legislative Session. I'm going to go through a list of four or five different pieces of legislation I just want to put on your radar, and if there are others you'd like to discuss, please don't hesitate to bring those up, and I'd be happy to give you my insight on them and certainly invite Dr. McNeil to add any color commentary she may have. But first, in the two weeks since we've seen each other, I'm very happy to say that the bill that the school district sponsored, Assembly Bill 57, had a hearing in Assembly Education, and I think the hearing went very well. There was a lot of support from stakeholders in our community that appreciated the intent of what we're trying to do with Assembly Bill 57. Dr. McNeil and Emily Ellison and Ben Hayes did a great job presenting the bill, providing an overview and background for what we are trying to accomplish. So I'm very happy with where that sits. We are working on a small amendment for the Clark County School District and the Clark County Education Association to allow a pilot program they're working on in their district around P for Performance that has a nexus of student learning goals. We certainly don't want to get in the way of that programming. We certainly don't wanna get in the way of that programming with our legislation. And so we're working to prepare an amendment that would allow that program to continue in Clark County. So I don't know, Dr. McNeil, that's one in particular. If you wanted to offer anything, or just, I think we had a good hearing, and we will look forward to the Chair of that committee work sessioning that bill in the next couple of weeks. Okay, great. Also, at the last board meeting, we briefly talked about Senate Bill 83. That was a bill brought forward to address assessments and the potential waiver of standardized assessments from the federal government. It had a second hearing today over on the Assembly side in the Education Committee. It's a little less clear, the importance of that piece of legislation, given the guidance from the U.S. Department of Education yesterday indicating they would not be offering blanket waivers of assessments. It looks like the bill's still gonna continue to go forward, but with a couple of modifications to continue to make it relevant for assessment, given the new direction from the U.S. Department of Education. Tomorrow, Senate Bill 66 has a hearing in the Senate Education Committee. And this is a bill brought forward by the Clark County School District to address K-12 connectivity and the digital divide that we all learned so much about during the pandemic, trying to bring some kind of structure to K-12 connectivity since we know how important it is for our students to be connected at home, certainly right now, but going forward also. There's a pretty big amendment to that bill from the Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology as part of the Governor's Office that would ultimately create the Nevada K-12 Connectivity Task Force. And the, the main purpose of that would be to make sure we understand as a state what our gaps are in connectivity for students, and to be ready to receive and articulate what our needs are as the federal government looks to push down funds, whether that be through E-Rate or other federal stimulus to address connectivity. They're really rewarding states that have a plan and have structure for what that connectivity needs are in their state. And so that bill will have a hearing tomorrow. Just a couple of other quick bills that are not having hearings but that you may hear about, that I want you to be aware of. Senate Bill 75 is a good example of a bill that would not have otherwise really impacted the school district. It's a bill from the Department of Employment, Training, and Rehabilitation to do what I would consider kind of technical changes related to the unemployment insurance system. But there's an amendment that's been offered by the Nevada State Education Association that would allow the nine, 10, 11-month education service professionals to qualify for unemployment insurance while we're not in school. Even though they would still be employed with the district, they could potentially be eligible for unemployment benefits during summer months. So again, not one that maybe we would originally thought to be part of, but could potentially be amended into and have a tremendous financial impact on our district. Estimates of around $5 million, $5.4 million on an annual basis if that amendment were to be adopted and passed as is. So some work to do on that particular piece of legislation to make sure that the fiscal impact of that is clear to our lawmakers. Quickly, Assembly Bill 88 is a piece of legislation introduced that would require the district to develop a process by which we would consider, I'm not sure the right word, complaints around the use of school naming logos and mascots that may ultimately be offensive to a particular group of people, particularly the Native American community. So this bill's not directed at us in particular, and I'm confident that the school naming process we have set up already at the district would accommodate what the bill has in mind. But it's certainly something that it could potentially ask us to look back at schools that are named after a certain individual that may have a questionable past, a process by which the board would reconsider those school names, logos, or mascots. Senate Bill 102 could potentially have an impact as it proposes to change the starting age for kindergarten students from September 30th to August 1st. And the idea around this piece of legislation is that since we're starting school earlier in Nevada, in many places, including in Clark County, in August in many cases, having those students in our classroom, kindergarten classrooms at four years old for sometimes up to two months can be problematic. So I think from a programming perspective, it probably makes some sense. There will be some fiscal implications and operational implications in, if it's passed, in that first year of passage, where we'll have a cohort of students that's basically only 10 months of the year. So it would sort of naturally be a smaller group of students, and they would kind of matriculate up through the system the whole way, which may make our allocation process a little complicated for that class. And will have a fiscal impact in the first year because we will expect about 650 fewer kindergarteners in that year if that change is made. And then the last bill I'll mention today is Senate Bill 120. That's, oh, do you want me to stop?
I'm sorry, we're gonna jump in. Dr. McNeil has a question.
Hey, Lindsay, would you just clarify for the record? So the kindergarten bill does not have anything, any impact as far as making kindergarten mandatory. So the mandatory age of, of school still stays the same. This has nothing to do with that.
That's correct. This would only change the eligibility date when students can start school with us, the earliest they could start school with us. They would have to be five years old by August 1st. But the compulsory age for education in Nevada continues to be seven. Okay, last one, Senate Bill 120. Those of you that have been around for a while may have a little bit of kind of whiplash on this one because we saw something like this introduced and passed in 2015 that would essentially require principals in the first three years of their position to be at-will employees. And then subsequent after that three years have to reapply every five years. So you may recall that we, that bill passed in 2015. We set up a process. It was ultimately repealed in 2019. And so now it's back on the table for discussion with our legislature. And again, that's Senate Bill 120, and it relates specifically to school principals. So unless you wanna talk other things that I didn't mention, that's the legislative report for right now. I wish I had more information into the future, but I'm lucky to get a couple of dates noticed about what's coming up. So I don't know a whole lot about what's coming up, but happy to give you any other commentary about issues that I didn't mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Vice President Calhoun, start with you.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Lindsay. I was just curious, why NDE opposed AB-57? Just curious on that.
Thank you. I don't wanna be in a position to speak for them. When we prefiled the piece of legislation in August, we, as a courtesy, we sent the idea to them. So just, you know, to say this is what we're planning to sponsor. At that time, in, I think it was actually August 31st, because that's the deadline for bills to be filed. They sent us back a memo that they also presented during the hearing saying these are our concerns with your piece of legislation. I think we believe that the concerns outlined in that memo have been addressed by the intent of the legislation and perhaps in some cases differences in how we do SLOs, SLGs, and Washoe than they're familiar with in other places. So I don't wanna speak for them. You can see the memo that they submitted about what their concerns are, but that was disappointing.
Do you think it'll have any impact on the, on the passage of the bill? Or do you think we're still sitting okay?
I'm feeling confident that right now, that with the amendment for the Clark County School District and the Clark County Education Association together, that we have the votes to get the bill out of the Assembly Education Committee.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Calhoun. Trustee Thigpen.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question on SB 120. Since it was repealed in 2019, do you know why it's been brought back? I would just love to know your thoughts on that.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. I guess I would just say it's an ongoing dispute between the Clark County Education Association and the Clark County, they have a really long name, Association of Professional and Technical and Administrative Employees, kind of going back and forth between those two organizations about whether or not this is good public policy or not. I think in this, that particular instance, Washoe kind of gets caught in the middle of some of that push and pull. And I think this is a good example of that happening again.
Thank you, very interesting. Any other questions, comments? We will have Ms. Anderson. She is a standing item on the agenda.
Trustee Church has a comment or question.
Okay, yes, please. Trustee Church?
Thank you very much. Just two. Number one, Lindsay, I understand that there's a number of bills that would mandate the teaching of the Holocaust in high school. And I have it on good authority, they're gonna be kind of consolidated and coming back as one bill. Can you comment on that? You know the status, and can you keep us updated?
Thank you, Trustee Church. I agree with you. There are three BDRs that were published, including one from Lieutenant Governor's Office. And in fact, I was just corresponding today. It looks like Assemblywoman Leslie Cohen is gonna pick up the one piece of legislation and move that forward, but her bill has not been introduced yet. So we will wait patiently until that language is introduced in order to analyze that and respond.
Okay, keep us updated, or keep me updated at least. Also, SB 111, I believe it is, would make the role of the school trustees in Washoe County either unelected or a hybrid system. Can you update us on that, or keep us updated?
Sure, Trustee Church. So SB 111, as introduced, proposes to, I will only comment on the Washoe County School District because it's a little bit different for Clark, but would transition the Washoe County School Board of Trustees from seven elected members to three elected members at large and four appointed members, one from the governor, one from the Washoe County Commission, and one from each of City of Reno and City of Sparks. That bill's not been scheduled for a hearing yet. That issue is not part of our legislative platform. So in general, the district doesn't take a position on the governance model of the Board of Trustees. The only other thing I would say is that Speaker Fryerson has a BDR, which is, you know, a baby bill, a pre-bill, also proposing some kind of a hybrid-appointed school board. But that has not been introduced at this point, so I'm not sure what that language is.
Now, was who Speaker who?
Speaker Fryerson. Are you, are you looking, are you, you good, Trustee Church? I will also add that I know the Nevada School Boards Association, NASB, is also, also has a, has a position on, I will say, SB 111, and has traditionally stood against appointed trustees. And I have, they have a lot of research around that. And I'm looking, we haven't, we haven't had a chance to connect verbally yet, but we'll, we'll be talking. So she did say that they're, they stand against it. They have, they have a lot of information about it. And of course, they don't stand whether the board is elected or appointed, so they are a more objective voice on this. So I'm looking forward to that discussion. Other questions, Trustee Church? Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else for Lindsay? We do have a public comment. We wanna get that. Why don't we go ahead, JJ?
Phil Kaiser.
Welcome, Mr. Kaiser. Welcome back.
Thank you again, Phil Kaiser, high school teacher, President of the Washoe Education Association. I rise to support AB-57 that would suspend the SLO, SLG process, at least for the next several years. The only legitimate purpose for assessing students should be to determine what the students have learned. Then an educator can remediate, reteach, augment, enrich based on the level of understanding. And assessments one measure of what the students know and are able to do. Depending on the type of assessment, it can provide an opportunity for students to improve and grow. The goal is to improve student learning. Using student assessments to evaluate educators is not legitimate. For example, there are many variables in why students might do better or worse on a culminating or formative assessment. If I were to use an argumentative essay as an assessment for government class, a student may improve over time because of what he's learned in English class, or drama club, or individual reading, or journal writing, or parental guidance, or peer editing. On the other hand, a variety of events inside or outside of school can result in a student not doing well. Perhaps the student's not feeling well, has had family trauma, or is angry with friends, or with me. Have you ever met a teenager who's moody, or angry, or apathetic for no apparent reason? Have you ever met a teenager? So we support the suspension of the SLOs for the purposes of evaluating teachers. We also support the waiver of the testing requirements that the National Department of Education says that are still needed. I think our students are tested excessively. I think that the standardized tests in this year are crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, JJ. Okay, seems, looks like nothing else. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your work. See you in two weeks. Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 5.01. This is Agenda Five. This is Consideration of Adoption of a Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21001. This is our first resolution of the year of our Lord, 2021. A resolution, God bless you, a resolution designating the week of February 22nd through the 26th as Public Schools Week. Hoo-hoo! In Washoe County School District. This is for possible action. And our presenters are two, two of our lead area superintendents, Lauren Ford and Joe Ernst. The floor is yours.
Madam President, Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, Joe Ernst, area superintendent. We're excited to be here today. And on the, on the behalf of the Office of School Leadership, we wanted to reiterate the sentiments of our superintendent, Dr. McNeil, in her recent correspondence to Washoe County School District employees. If there has ever been a time to understand and honor the importance of public education, it's this year. Seeing all the innovation, the 21st century teaching, and the tireless dedication of our employees has been put, put into, and all of the help that has been put into place for students, families, and staff. Washoe County School District in particular has been a leader in getting all students back in school while also providing distance learning options. And we are proud of our efforts of all of our schools.
So let's take a moment to recognize the extraordinary efforts of our principals, teachers, and support staff in our schools to acknowledge the exceptional work they have done throughout this school year. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thanks to the both of you. And this was, was an absolute necessity on the year like the one that we've had. I can't imagine the, the way the public schools across the nation, but certainly we can look at our public schools here. And you start looking at, the word unprecedented is not an overstatement in terms of what we've dealt with, you know, for the past 11 months. Yeah, well, you just think about it. It's been 11 months. We were, we just can be here for a minute. And then it turned into an hour, and turned, and next thing you know, it turned into a year. And we're still here. So we're really, I, I know as a board, we're really grateful for the work that's been done in the buildings. There's been a lot of hard work, a lot of heavy lifting. Grateful for the, the resources and support that's been made available for our families. Certainly difficult for them as well. And some of our teachers are, have their own kids at home, and they're doing the same thing and all of that. And our, our workers in the buildings, all over the buildings, and the transportation, just across the board. So we do have a resolution that Trustee Calvert is going to read on our behalf from the board to, just to acknowledge this day and have a resolution for it, however appropriately. Trustee Calvert?
Washoe County School District.
Let's make that mic a little bit closer to you. Yeah.
Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-001. A resolution designating the week of February 22nd through 26th, 2021, as Public Schools Week in the Washoe County School District. Whereas nationally, public schools educate nine of every 10 students. And whereas, public schools are the greater equalizer for children, helping to lift generations of people out of poverty and from middle to higher income, helping set young adults on the path to a fulfilling life. And whereas, every student has a right to an education that helps them reach their full potential and to attend schools that offer a high-quality edu- potential and to attend schools that offer a high-quality education experience regardless of their zip code. And whereas Washoe Public Schools should foster inclusive, safe, and personalized learning environments where students can learn to think critically, problem-solve, and build relationships. And whereas effective engagement between families and public schools improves student outcomes, inspire future leaders, and contributes to the citizenry of our country. And whereas the need for a strong public education system is a nonpartisan issue. And public education is declassified as a state right in Nevada under Article 11 of the Nevada Constitution. And whereas public education requires the support and investment of our federal, state, and local elected officials to provide adequate funding to ensure strong educational outcomes for all of our Nevada students. And whereas stable, equitable, predictable, and adequate funding for great public schools for every student is necessary to ensure students have inviting classrooms and school libraries with up-to-date resources, as well as well-prepared and supported educators. And whereas Washoe County School District recognizes partnerships between public schools, business, and industry, and the community is essential for the future economic development and long-term competitiveness of the region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Washoe County School District Board of Trustees designates February 22nd through 26th, 2021, as Public Schools Week in the Washoe County School District, adopted on this 23rd day of February 2021.
Thank you very much, Trustee Calvert. And of course, signed by myself and our clerk. Let's give a hand for Public Schools Week. Very well-deserved. All working extremely hard in the schools. Thank you very much. And we have that resolution. We have already signed it. Trustee Calvert has it, so... No, it goes that way. We signed it already. It goes to them. Sorry. It goes in the Office of School Leadership. Thank you so much. And to our area troops, you guys have been amazing this year. Thank you. Really thank you for your work. A lot of, a lot of hard work. Okay, we're going to move on now to Agenda Item 5.02.
Dr. Taylor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Oh, this is for action. Oh! My bad. I was like, yeah, let's do it. I guess I have to ask you guys what you think too, huh? Okay. All right, how about a motion?
I can do it.
Yes, thank you.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 21-001, a resolution designating the week of February 22nd to 26th, 2021, as Public Schools Week in the Washoe County School District.
Been moved and seconded that we designate February 22nd through 26th as Public Schools Week and that we adopt the resolution. Resolution 21-001. Any discussion?
President Taylor, I'm sorry. Who provided the second for that?
The second came from Trustee Minneto.
Thank you.
Clerk Minneto, as a former teacher. Yes, all right. I guess we have to vote. I can't just do this myself. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposition? All right, the motion is carried. Let the record show that it is unanimous. It is unanimous. Thank you. I got all excited. I thought we could just do it. I can't just decree, huh? No. President not crewing, right? Got it. Dang. All right, now we'll go on to Agenda Item 5.02. That's a good thing you're here, Council. We go on to Agenda Item 5.02. Presentation and Discussion of Chronic Absenteeism, Course Failures, and Graduation-On-Track Status as They Relate to COVID-19 and Learning Loss. And the Discussion of School and Programming Responses to Ensure Academic, Social, and Emotional Recovery. This is for information and discussion only, but it's a very important topic. I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent and team. I know there are many others that are listening that will be a part of this. I think some will be appearing on Zoom. Are they all here? Oh, I see they're making their way down. Okay. You walk like I do. I have a bad knee, so, okay. All right, turn it over to you, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I am actually going to turn it over to Mr. Ben Hayes.
Good afternoon, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, trustees. For the record, Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer. And as the title suggests, we came to really give the school board our kind of first kind of look at data around, let's say, let's call it stalled academic momentum. I don't love the term "learning loss" because our kids are still learning quite a bit, but there have been some stalled momentum this year. So I'm joined by Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf, Area Superintendent Gina Curtis, and we have some incomparable principals that'll join us later, including Desiree Mandeville, Melinda Baker, and Dan Kirk. And Dr. Lamarcus helped put this presentation together too. He's in the back, but he's going to trust Debbie and I to make his points. So I will go ahead and start. And are you going to do the slides, JJ? Okay. So what's that? Okay, thank you. Before we dive into the data, and there's, I think, a good 10 slides or something, I wanted to make a couple of brief comments just to kind of provide context to the data. So the first one is, I really, this, it's a bleak picture. It's a bleak picture across the country, but I want to, we all want to honor the tremendous amount of work that the principals and the teachers and the counselors and the students have been doing all year, all year long. And several central office folks when it comes to any kind of intervention and support. All of our educators are working tremendously hard. So I would love it if we could approach this as not kind of a judgment on the year that we've had, but a needs assessment for the years going forward. There is kind of, we have some stalled academic momentum, but this should be seen as where the system should urgently put resources. I know you had a budget meeting today, workshop earlier today. We have grants coming up and we have a strategic plan. So I kind of look at these data as kind of a needs assessment going forward, not a judgment of where we have been. And then the second one is there, you've all heard, and we've talked about it in surveys, we've talked about it in several of our board meetings. Attendance has been, just because of the shifting models, distance, hybrid, there are some inaccuracies in attendance data. So these data, I won't say that are 100% correct, but I have dug in very hard, validated a lot of them. So where... There are some glitches. The story that you will see is pretty accurate, and it'll be easy enough to see that as the day goes on. So with all that, I'll dive into the data. The first slide we see here is chronic absenteeism. And just to remind trustees, chronic absenteeism is defined by the federal government. So we don't define it in Washoe. The state doesn't define it. The U.S. Department of Education defines it. And what it is, is simply a student is chronically absent if they're missing more than 10% of their days. And how they count it is not a period. You've missed one class, but if you missed, there's X amount of instructional minutes in a day. And if you miss more than half of those, then you're absent for the day. So chronically absent students are missing essentially 18 days a year in 180 school days. So what you can see is essentially a tripling of chronic absence last year to this year. And really, this is last fall semester versus this fall semester. So year over year, kind of an apples-to-apples. Obviously, it's not an apples-to-apples year, but you get the point. And what you see is 13 to 37 district overall. Elementary schools doubled, so from 11 to 23%. And in middle schools, 13 to 44%. And in high schools, 17 to 51%. A couple of quick things, obviously, this is historically high. Even in the elementary schools, we've never been close to 20%. So it's alarming to see that. And certainly, when we see 51% in the high schools, it implies that we need to support and get some resources out there. So the next slide shows chronic absenteeism by learning model. And I won't go too far into that. I know that the data are on the screen, and we have a lot to get through tonight. So I won't read every indicator. I'll just kind of say what jumps out to me is irrespective of learning model, whether it's distance or in-person every day or hybrid, especially in the secondary schools, it's pretty similar. It's not like one model is way better than the rest. Certainly, in elementary school, we can all predict that in-person learning has kind of benefited our students. But you can see there's some equality going across that chart. And so it's not like one learning model is privileged incredibly high over another one. The next slide, we can show chronic absenteeism by some of our student population. So these next two slides, this first one is by race and ethnicity. And again, these are some of the students, student groups that we have been trying to get resource to support them as well as we can when we address achievement gaps and disproportionality. The next slide after this will show kind of our students and children in transition, 60%. And those are our students that don't have stable housing, remember. And then each of those populations that you can see, the program groups that are kids that are already in need of some supports, that we try to get supports, they're benefiting... They're being... Let's see. The gap is increasing more, and that's alarming for us. So we want to get supports in there right away. When we say urgency and the strategic plan for the next few years, we've got to start with some of those populations to help our students. And if we could jump to... Yeah, this is good. Core course failures. So this... So in... I want to go... I know we're going quickly because we have a lot to go through. I also want to be sensitive to any questions you have. I know I speak pretty fast sometimes when talking about data. So that's the end of the section on chronic absenteeism. You'll see that it's pretty related to core course failures and some of the engagement data that we've showed you all year long. So without any questions, I'll go.
No, I'm going to pause you right here. I see a question from our trustee, Calo. Vice President Calo?
Thank you, Madam President. We've heard throughout the school year, and we still hear it, about students being marked absent when they are, when they're saying they're there. And so I'm wondering, how skewed do you think this is, this data is, based on those types of instances where families are saying their student's being marked absent if in campus, but they're there, but there was assignment submitted incorrectly, or some other glitch?
Right.
And then there seems to be a gap into correcting that, and then it just kind of sits there. So it's absent, but in reality, student wasn't absent.
Yeah, there is no question that that is happening, and especially during the fall semester. I think there's been some protocols put into place and some guidance this spring semester that's improved it. But there's, you're right, there's no question that that's happening. Why I'm not terribly concerned... Why I wouldn't attribute that to the jump in chronic absenteeism, certainly there's some, but those are largely in period absences. And remember, chronic absenteeism is you miss half of your instructional day. So it would have to happen in at least three or four periods separately for that to click in. And that still can happen, especially if a child forgets to go online and click, you know, that they were there and engaged. There's a lot of protocols that our schools are using to go back and say, no, this child was present, and so we'll mark him as present retroactively. But to your point, it does happen, and there is a gap that it takes sometimes five days to fix it. Sometimes, to be honest, I've seen cases where it doesn't get fixed until weeks later. But another thing that gives me confidence in these data is we... I showed you on a few slides ago that no matter what the learning model is, if it's hybrid, in-person every day, they're pretty similar on chronic absenteeism. I broke apart the... Or we broke apart the data. Kyle Kemp in our office broke apart the data. And you can see on in-person... So say you're an A student on a hybrid A schedule. You're just as likely to be chronically absent on in-person days as distance days. And in-person attendance, especially during the hybrid, remember, there's maybe 12 to 15 to 18 kids in a classroom, so it's easier to do attendance that way. So to your point, it definitely occurs, but I don't think it waters down or inflates the data to a tremendous extent, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And then the last question I have about chronic absenteeism is, is this pretty consistent across the district? Or are there pockets of our communities that are really high that we may need to direct resources to specific communities or specific schools?
There... It's remarkably consistent across our schools. There are kind of different areas, and Dr. Lamarcus would be better to answer this than me, but I will attempt at it. We've worked with our GIS department and Adams and Pete's shop to kind of map out chronic absenteeism in different neighborhoods, and even you can get down to the census tract. We've looked at definitely different populations. You've seen up there that children in transition was a remarkably high one. So there are different areas that are definitely the counselors at schools and teachers at schools are reaching out. But then also, we have our intervention department that does tremendous work in pinpointing where different areas are and kind of go in and make sure that that's happened. But as far as the system goes, the schools are pretty remarkably similar. There's definitely some that are a little higher or lower than others, but you can tell it's a... It's a phenomenon that's occurring across 100 schools relatively equally.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Calo. My question connects right to that. Do you have any idea how we compare about with other districts? And I know nationally, it's a... I know there's some issue in terms of some of the things I've read, but you may have looked at it more broadly. How this is compared to what we see across the country?
Yeah, we don't have... So I read an article this morning, and I can't remember the district, but it was something like 50% chronic absenteeism. And I've looked at... We don't have... One of the benefits of being in the Council of Great City Schools is we can compare data to each other. And Dr. McNeil sits on those calls. I sit on some too, and Dr. Laura Davidson does. We don't have perfectly accurate data across the system. I think that'll come in a year or two. But what I can tell you is I do believe that Washoe is lower than the average, if that makes sense. And it's partially, what I believe is because we've had more in-person. So not to compare ourselves against Clark at all, but there are certain indicators that put us a little bit ahead of some of our sister districts.
I appreciate that. One of the things that surprised me, I mean, I knew that there's chronic absenteeism and that those numbers are high based upon our learning models and where we are, and some of the same things as Vice President Calo said, some of the things we hear from families that my kid was there, but they marked my... You know, the whole, you know, all of that. But it surprised me when we looked at school level, because even though in the elementary schools, they're in-person, you know, their numbers have still gone up quite a bit. And they're, they've been full-time. I mean, we still have the distance learning kids, but any idea, any thoughts on that?
I should probably, but I don't. I don't want to interpret outside my... I know that it's been... All of you know this, all of everybody sitting here. It's been a chaotic years with exclusions. There's been fear of if you're sick, stay home. I will say, when there's a child, when a child is excluded, we put them onto temporary distance learning, so they're not absent. But certainly, that creeps in, especially if you... Last fall, if you had the sniffles or a cough, we definitely encourage you to stay home. And you didn't also always kind of volunteer to click right into temporary distance learning. So I think that's a big part of it.
I mean, their numbers, again, they're... The other numbers, most other numbers have tripled in middle school and high school, and theirs have doubled. But it was still surprising for me to see such an increase because they've been in full-time school for those that wanted to for so long.
Yeah, no question.
Thank you. Why don't we continue on?
Okay. I'll jump to core course failures, and I'll kind of go through these fairly quickly. These data aren't as alarming as the chronically absent data. And as we just spoke, there's so many reasons for chronic absenteeism. I'm not saying that all of these children are disengaged. There's so many different reasons to be absent, especially this year. Core course failures, we did see a significant jump from 24% to 32%. What's most... And I think our high schools, like I said, they do tremendous work, and you'll hear them talk later. They really, when we say every child by name and face to graduation, they really do work with kids individually. So this 32% versus 24%, we don't like to see it, but I think this is something we can overcome. What really kind of scares me based on data in previous years is the, all the way to the right, 14% versus 7% with three or more. And remember, this is a core, these are core courses. So it's not like you can make it up with another elective. It's an English or a math or a science class. And when I said previous year's data, if you're failing three or more courses and we don't wrap around you pretty tightly, then it's oftentimes a ticket to dropout. dropout. So we're already doing a bunch of work, um, Dr. Lamarcas' group, uh, and the area superintendents are doing a bunch of work to make sure that we don't lose them, summer school programming, uh, and, and spring break, jumpstart, all that. But that's one of the things that jumps out at me for the, these data. The next two slides again show by race and ethnicity and by, um, special program. And you can see it's pretty similar patterns, um, some of the gaps are widening, but like I said, we don't, we have been with a teaching and learning committee that you'll hear about later, uh, strategic planning, a whole bunch of effort to not just throw edgenuity at it, not just throw tutoring at it, but really come up with systemic supports for these schools, these students to go forward. And then finally, uh, this chart shows, so that was any, um, core course failure, so math reading. This, there was an article in the Nevada Independent that showed these data for Nevada or a different district, so I just thought I would show you one for our, our district. And you can see there's a jump all across, uh, grades. Nothing doubling, nothing, except for, um, certainly an elementary school is, is hard to see. But I think these are, again, with the supports that you see coming up with a bunch of outreach, I'm not going to pretend it's not an urgent issue, but I think that the way our pathway is structured, we can overcome some of this with, with some grant funding and some resources. And then finally, this is, I hate to be Mr. Doom and Gloom, so now I'm, I don't want to be lonely and doom and gloom, so I want to show you that across the nation, you can kind of see some of the struggles that many districts, many metropolis, many rural areas have, have struggled with during this pandemic, uh, and that's just a sample of those. We get emails sent to us from Dr. McNeil every day that has a new story kind of of the struggles in districts. I, I will say, we have a ton of work to do, but I'm really proud of the, the data that I've seen coming, coming through and moving us forward. So what I'll say is, all this kind of culminates, if we can go to the next slide, um, it pulls together some of the data we've showed you throughout the year, um, with family perceptions of COVID, uh, learning models and safety, uh, and also chronic absenteeism that you've seen today, school course failures that you've seen today. So when we say kind of conditions for learning really drive the learning that occurs, this chart really shows it, how connected all of those things are. So if we have a safe climate, if we have, um, strong relationships, and we have good perceptions that, yes, this model is, um, helping me learn, then I think we, we will get to better outcomes for students. And you can see kind of our, some of our secondary grades here on this chart have struggled more than the district average, uh, and there's a lot of kind of complicating factors in that, and I would say hybrid has definitely been one of them. But, uh, all of this kind of culminates into what we've talked about for a decade, um, is graduation. And not that that's the only metric we look at, but it is one of our North Stars, and I know we want to make it kind of a portrait of a child that we, we are thrilled with that graduate crossing the stage. So you can see, I wanted to show you how much this is impacting our graduation rate. So if we can go to the next slide-
I'm sorry, uh-
Oh, sorry.
You go, go ahead, Vice President Cottle, and I have a question as well on this slide.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to go back to the slide about course failures of special populations. Is, uh, is John Van Tress here? I just wanted to give kudos to special education, just because some of the special education cohorts, the numbers have come down. And I know that there was an emphasis this year in making sure our special education students received the services they need to, to be successful. I think with all the challenges that we face this year to cease those numbers, some of those numbers coming down, I think that's really, really good, and I, I hope that some things have been learned through this year that can be applied going forward, so that those numbers can keep, keep going down. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. I'm going to go to Student Trustee Victoria, then I'll, I'll have my question.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for high school course failures. Um, and the data shows the three or more core subjects failed. Um, does edgenuity and the hybrid students, how, is, do we see like a difference between those two, or, or like, are more students that do edgenuity are the ones getting these Fs, or how, how does that work?
It's something we're looking into, and I, I don't feel comfortable answering that super accurately right now, because there's a whole bunch of, as you know, with edgenuity, it's kind of, some people, some students had a slower time getting through it. So there's a lot of incompletes left, um, so I can't answer that right now, but I'm definitely, I'll definitely submit something to the superintendent's highlights or to you in person.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Student Trustee Victoria. Um, and my, my question is on, when you go to, um, the data connection slide about family perceptions, the data that you have there? Just, just for the public, I mean, we have, it's a lot of color-coded and numbers and so on, can you kind of walk through that just a little bit, to make sure we don't leave people behind?
Yeah, I apologize, I went too quickly on that. So yeah, what you see is, I mean, essentially, green is, is better than red, uh, and kind of a stop sign and terminology or metaphor. Uh, and, and as the columns go, it's from, these first four, five are from the Family Wellbeing Survey, so did they feel like school was safe to go to, um, and COVID, uh, safety protocols were, were in place so that their children, or they felt that their children were safe? The second one was family perceptions of distance learning, whether or not they thought that that was impactful for their kids and that their children were learning.
I'm sorry, will you interpret the numbers?
Yes, sorry. Uh, so what that is, is if you think of the district average in terms of, let's say the district average was 70% of families felt that their children were safe at school with COVID safety protocols, then that number of seven in kindergarten means that kindergarten parents felt seven percentage points more, that seven percent, percentage points felt that their children were safe. Does that make sense? So if the district average was 70, kindergarten parents would, 77% of them would have felt safer, whereas in 12th grade, uh, 65% would have felt that they were safe.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, that's the kind of interpretation I wanted to make sure that, I mean, I figured, I figured out, okay, green is good, red is bad.
Yeah.
Negative numbers are bad.
I should have spent more-
Positive numbers are good, uh, but just to know, just to give a, a clear picture for those that may, may be following at home or may have this, to kind of walk them through it, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I go too, I get intimidated, you only gave me 20 minutes, I'm just kidding. Okay, so I will, um, I will jump to, uh, graduation, if we can go to the next slide. And this is kind of a, like I said, it culminates into graduation, which is where we're trying to take all of our students on a journey. This slide here is last year, uh, in August, um, and we're looking at last year's cohort versus this year's cohort. So in last year's cohort, at, in August, approximately 80% of the class of 2020 was on track to graduate, whereas this year, 84% in August were on track to graduate. So we had a little bit of a head start this year, and I've said before, it speaks to the kind of pathway that we have in our, our, all of our schools from pre-K to 12th grade have built. So we got a little bit of a head start this year, but if you go to the next slide, last year at this time, uh, 75% were on tra- and, and this is jumps forward to February, so 75% were on track and meeting all their goals, whereas, and that was for the class of 2020. For the class of 2021, it drops down to 70%. So that's about a 10 percentage point swing. Uh, we had a 4% head start, and, um, we've fallen behind by about 5%. But like I said before, I'm confident, there's a lot of stuff going on, you'll hear about it soon, that we've already started making up ground in the last, I would say, two months when, when Dr. McNeil and I started looking at these data. So it, like I said, it's a 10 percentage point swing, kind of with the momentum from COVID that, that we've lost, but we've started gaining some ground already. But we wanted to be transparent that, um, that we might have a lower graduate, graduation rate this year.
And I appreciate that, and, and appreciate the transparency, I'm sure we all do, as well as the, the public. The learning models that we've had to go to have been a challenge, continue to be a challenge, and, and we know that there are plenty of students that struggle. The, the thing that's good about this presentation tonight is to really see what the numbers really are, you know, to be upfront and be, be, be transparent about it, and then also to talk about, so what are we doing as we move forward, so we can, you know, how can we help grab these kids and, and save those that we can, so that they can get what they need, right, and, um, and, and, and finish up strong. So, so I appreciate, appreciate the transparency, and certainly looking forward to as we continue on.
Thank you. And that's a perfect segue of what we're doing going forward, so I'll hand it over to Deputy Byersdorf.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Um, Dr. Taylor, Dr. McNeil, um, trustees, Deborah Byersdorf, Deputy Superintendent. And, um, I want to, I want to start here that, uh, yeah, what are we doing going forward? What are we doing now? And you've heard in the past what we've been working on as well. If you remember our meeting at Worcester High School about a month ago, um, we talked about the work that was happening as we prepared for, um, the start of the second semester, whether it was around attendance, um, edgenuity, um, supporting our students that are on full-distance learning, our students that are on hybrid, our elementary students are vulnerable populations. I mean, we could talk on and on, and, and I, you're going to hear from the three amazing principals that are behind us in, in just a moment here, but I want to talk a little bit about this, this particular slide. Ben's team, um, in the Office of Accountability, um, does a monumental, um, I mean, really, it's a, it's a, a model, in my personal opinion, for the entire nation, but it's also a model that's been definitely used and shared with other districts in our state, because behind that particular slide, there's a lot of work that goes into it. So if you look at that teal, um, I, I think that's the one up there, I can't quite see it, but I think it's 77.7% on track. How do we know students are on track? So whether it's attendance, it's, um, credit attainment, how our high school students are doing the end of their freshman year, their sophomore year, their junior year. And then the other colors that you see as well, you know, what are some of the barriers for those students that aren't on track? There's a lot of reports and access to information that our schools can have as well, that drills down, um, to each of our seniors, for example, and, and what their needs are as we, as we're getting closer to June and, and wanting them to cross that stage on time. So a lot of work, our schools use these reports, our area superintendents use these reports, I use these reports, um, when I prepare to meet with, with our principals and their teams as well. So very helpful, um, information. So JJ, if you could go forward one, so graduation, um-
Madam President, I've got a question.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, Vice President Cottle.
Yeah, before you go on, I just want to, uh, ask about summer school. I know at one point in time, there was talk about expanded summer school, I'm not sure if that's still being discussed, but has that conversation happened with any students about ensuring that if there's going to be an issue, they hang around and get done now and not let this continue into next year or the year after, or maybe it never gets done?
Yes, and we're, we're going to talk about that too in just, just a moment here, Trustee Cottle. Um, summer school, like, maybe we remember summer school has changed over the years, but, um, I think we've got some good ideas and plans that are moving forward to support not just our, our, our current senior class, our class of 2021, but basically all kids, um, K through, through, through 12, so. So being on track to graduation doesn't start the moment you enter your senior year, right? It starts, um, you've heard us say before, all the way back into, um, pre-K, um, pre-kindergarten, and how our schools, um, work together, um, as students matriculate through each grade level, and I think you're going to hear a little bit about that work from our three principals as well. But what I wanted to talk to more specifically this evening is, um, the work that's happening now to support our class of 2021, our seniors. So, um, pre-pandemic and this year as well, um, there are graduation tracking meetings that happen, um, that include the deputy superintendent, the area superintendent, our principals, uh, counselors, um, our guidance counselors at the school site, um, other administrators, teachers, registrars, um, that participate in these meetings. And, and the idea of these meetings is not to assure, um, myself or, or the principals, area superintendent, that they're doing everything we can't, they, they can to, to get kids to, to graduation on time. But it's also, um, what supports are needed, what help does the school need as well, um, to, to support our students? So that support also looks like other offices and departments that wrap themselves around our schools and our students and, as well. So again, taking you back to that meeting at Worcester, if you remember, Rochelle Morello, for example, our director of our intervention department, talked about the work that's happening with the wraparound supports, um, our, um, uh, work that we do with community partners, the work that happens with chronic absenteeism, um, you remember her talking about helping families with rent and, and things like that as well? So, so these particular meetings are, are scheduled to ensure that the school has the help that they need. And the, the amazing thing, in my opinion, about these meetings is you can be at a school as large as North Valleys High School, or we had a, a meeting with TMCC High School , um, early yesterday morning, they've got 80 graduates at that school. Our schools know their students, they know their circumstances, they know their, their celebrations, their struggles, um, and, and are always working to motivate those, just hang in there, you're almost there to, to graduation. So, um, so anyways, I just, I wanted to share that about those grad tracking meetings. Guidance counseling, our, our high school, all of our counselors at our, all levels, but specifically our high school guidance counselors have so much to know, they, they're, they're responsible for the implementation of policies and procedures and understanding NRS, um, but more so understanding their students too, um, and again, the supports that they need, um, getting them in edgenuity classes, what, summer school, fifth-year senior status perhaps, um, the things that are going to get, um, our, our kids to, to graduation. Gina and I also had a, Gina Curtis and I also had a recent meeting with the team at HUG High School, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I think I had made the comment, wow, they were, they were working every angle to get their kids to, to, to graduation, and it was amazing. And then the amazing thing too, is the schools, our high schools talk to each other and share ideas, and we're doing this, have you thought about doing that? So, um, I, I'm really, really proud of the work that, that happens to, to support our seniors. So work is happening now, spring intercession, spring break is only three weeks away, um, and, um, what our high schools are going to be doing to provide, um, programming and assistance to their seniors. I will also say too, that it just doesn't happen at spring break or during the holiday break, it also happens on Saturdays and after school. So I think about Damone Ranch High School, for example, that does a lot of work on Saturdays with, um, not only their seniors, but with their seniors, um, to ensure that they're on track to, to graduation, getting the help that they need. And then family engagement, um, you know, we had heard, uh, some public comment earlier about family engagement, and, um, I think, um, hoping that it's not a, an afterthought, and it's definitely not. Our families, our parents, our guardians, um, are such an integral part of the process, to help understand the process and what their students need to do, and especially this year, it, it's, you know, it, it's been tough. We, we all know that keeping kids motivated that are learning online with edgenuity or on the hybrid schedule, and students that are coming into our buildings five days a week. So we honor our partnerships with our families, and our schools are working very hard to reach out on a consistent basis, checking in with, with not only their students, but, but our students' families as well. Okay, I think I'm turning it back over to Ben.
Sorry, I, this is, I was interested with the notes from Dr. Lamarcas, so I'm going to get them out of my head. There's also a bunch of work that I want to honor, the work that Rochelle Mario does, and, and Debbie alluded to this already, that we have student graduation advocates and family graduation advocates that work individually with a lot of our kids, kind of at the system level, but also in, in a mentorship capacity. As Debbie said, family engagement, we have a lot going on, and innovative stuff. So Delisa Crane and, uh, her team have put together parent forums, Tech Thursday, to help kind of kids navigate, whether it be distance or hybrid or in-person, to navigate the pathway to graduation. And then finally, uh, we've kind of alluded to it already a few times, but the work of, we have attendance officers and re-engagement, and in normal years, we have this kind of system where the attendance officers will go out and get chronic absentee, or students who are kind of at risk or definitely being chronically absent, and then re-engagement specialists who kind of have dropped out or come close to dropping out, and we re-engage them. But this year, of course, they're just all hands on deck, trying to problem solve with as many families as we can, uh, with basic needs, so, sorry, Debbie.
No, thanks, Ben. Perfect. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Gina Curtis.
Good evening, Superintendent McNeil, President Taylor, Vice President Cottle, and the Board of Trustees. I'm Gina Curtis, Area Superintendent. Okay, so I get to talk about, um, summer and spring programming, and, um, Mrs. Byersdorf did an amazing job talking about what our high schools are doing for our students, so I'm not going to reiterate what she said, um, but what I'm going to add to that is, every year at this time, this is, the high schools are planning- are planning recovery methods and how can we support, intervene, plan differently for our seniors. So it happens every year, this year is a little bit different. But I am so proud of our schools being so innovative and looking outside of the box with all the restrictions we have right now. So we talked about spring break, spring break in the past, we've been able to do some AP prep. AP teachers come in and students come into the building and they prepare for their AP exams that are in May. There's also other CTE prep time that the schools also allow for the students to help with. Also, she also mentioned about after-school tutoring, extra classes in edgenuity, opening up computer labs for students who need that extra support, as well as advisory classes and enrichment classes. So those are embedded in the student's daily course class, and if it's every other day, they at least have that time to connect with their teacher or counselor for extra support in that area. When we talk about Jump Start, Jump Start has been in our district for years. It's ebbed and flowed in different directions, and I think this year we're putting a, a big focus on it because we have so much experience with Jump Start. And we focus on, I think this year we're going to really focus on fifth graders going to sixth grade, that transition, sixth graders going to seventh grade for the middle school concept, and then eighth graders going to ninth grade for the high school. And I know in the past that every school, the middle school and the high school, when we're talking about verticals, which you'll hear, we'll hear in a little bit, that transition from eighth to ninth grade is so crucial, just making sure the students feel comfortable. You know, they have all that, the fear of what's going to happen to them when they get in high school. And so most of the high schools have a soon-to-be, I will use this school, a Panther Day. And so the middle schools that feed into North Valleys, which would be O'Brien and Cold Spring, come here for a day, and I know it'll look different this year, but they're able to get a tour of the school, get to see other students, get to see the ROTC program, the foods program, the drama department, the music department. And so it just gives them an ease of coming to school. So with that, we will also have our summer school program. And I know that the high schools have an elaborate system for tracking our summer school kids, and this year it's going to be, it's going to be large. We're working with CNI to create some math courses.
CNI.
Curriculum and Instruction, thank you, Dr. Taylor. And also working with the curriculum assistant principals at the high school, who also plan the summer school timeframe and teachers. So our goal is to hopefully motivate our teachers, because they're the ones, we can't have summer school if we don't have teachers. And so we're going to have to do a temperature check on how our teachers are doing this summer, if they can teach in person or virtually, and then get our students enrolled and either work on credit recovery, and I'm not going to say student, uh, learning loss, but just to prepare them, especially in math, from eighth to ninth grade. And then we have, we'll have summer school for all the other grade levels as well. Either they can make up class credit, or they can get credit accrual. So if they're on track, they can take a class in the summer to give them credits to add to their transcript already.
Gina, I want to, I want to interrupt you if I may, just for a moment.
Yes, ma'am.
Talk, talk a little bit about, about summer school, because that's, you're, I was waiting until it came, because I knew it was coming. Do you anticipate any kind of, you know, effort to really encourage students to go to summer school more so than usual, just in terms of, you know, to, either to catch back up, or to just kind of get back in the groove, or whatever people's stat, this status may be?
And yes, I think that is the theme that the schools are promoting. Students know, if they know the material or not, they know that they need to have their math skills and their reading levels up to par, especially coming to high school. But this year is critical for them to take advantage of that. And so I know principals are working with their peers, as well as curriculum instruction is creating classes for that. But I think that what the students need to know is that when you're taking one class in summer school, it's not as overwhelming when you're taking six classes during the regular school day. If you can focus on pre-algebra or Algebra I for a three-week period for four hours a day without the stress of all the other classes, it is so meaningful and so effective. And I, I taught summer school math when I was a math teacher, and it was one of the greatest experiences I ever had, because it's such a small group and you see them all, every day, just the same kids, and you really build a connection with them and you can help them individually. So I know that our schools are stressing the importance of summer school. And we're working with transportation and all the other programs that support that, so.
Well, thank you for that. And I think of, of transportation is a great segue, because that, that, for those students that maybe couldn't get there, to even offer that, I mean, it's a, a whole, and I know summer school is not very high on everybody's list, because oh my goodness, you've been home all year, for Pete's sakes. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, just to, just to kind of get back in the groove, right? Okay, sorry, I shouldn't have said that on the record, my bad. Okay, trustee, take pen.
I just want to piggyback on, on kind of what you were saying. One thought I had was, and when I was in school, summer school was thought of like, there was a stigma around it, it was like, oh, you've done something wrong, you know, it just was looked down upon. Is that something that, that the, the principals and everyone is working to overcome? Is that a thing that we have to worry about here?
No, I don't think so. It's not looked down upon, it's encouraged. We are having, the carrot for our eighth graders is that they'll get a half a credit, so they'll be ahead of the game coming into high school. So all of their work that they're doing is going to be accounted for. So I think that's a positive, for sure.
That's very reassuring, thank you.
Sure. Okay, and I did want to mention too, we also have our summer, special ed summer school program too, ESY, Extended School Year. Dr. Taylor, ESY Extended School Year, I wanted to make sure you.
Thank you very much.
For our special ed students too, and I know that's very important for them as well. So with that, I wanted to explain to you vertical meetings and what we do as a office of school leadership. Each area superintendent has a area of schools. So for example, Jen Ventress has Area Five, which is North Valleys High School, where we are today, and they meet with their feeder schools, so the middle schools, O'Brien and Cold Springs, and then the elementary schools that feed into those middle schools, Lemon Valley, Silver Lake, those were, those are, that's considered a vertical. So when we're talking verticals, that's what we're, we're meaning, the high school and all the schools that lead into it. So we have established vertical meetings for the last year and a half, where we meet monthly with each vertical. So for example, Area Two, I have Reno and HUG, so I meet with them monthly. And then when we're not meeting in verticals, we're meeting as principals, and we have principal meetings once a month. So I'm excited to have the three amazing principals from Area Five come up and talk to you about what a vertical meeting looks like, what PLCs are happening, professional learning communities at their, during their meetings, and just kind of give you a feel for the work that they do. And so I'd love to introduce the principal of North Valleys High School, woo, Desiree Mandeville, the principal of O'Brien Middle School, woo, Melinda Baker, and the principal of Lemon Valley, Mr. Dan Kirk. Yay! Okay.
Dan, you didn't get a woo, I don't know what.
Yeah. Woo! We had to have a guy in here, you know.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much, since it's, it's very appropriate to have the three of you here, since we are in your vertical. Yes, absolutely, Dr. McNeil?
So just as they're making the transition, so real importantly, when we go back and we start talking about summer school, we just had our budget work session, and so importantly, this is exactly what those CAREZAG dollars would be able to be used for, but on a very comprehensive basis. So in the past, we've struggled with transportation for summer school. And with these CARE dollars, that's really going to be able to open up the doors for more students to be able to come to summer school. And our, our schools, I will tell you, and this isn't, this isn't just for, for North Valleys, but I will tell you, our high schools do a tremendous job on getting kids to school. Am I right, Victoria? I am absolutely right. They do a tremendous job on getting our kids to school for summer school by offering incentives, and it's fun. It truly, truly is fun. Now, it's probably going to look a little bit different this year, but the kids are going to really enjoy it, and that's only going to springboard them into the fall. And I love our middle school and our elementary schools too, because you guys do an amazing job too. But I was going to focus in on high schools just for a second.
All right. Well, again, thanks to the three of you for, for being here and for having us, for hosting us in the, the home of the Panthers, right? Right, Dan, thank, thank you for the face mask. Who's starting with us, which end? Okay, Dan, thank you for being here, Mr. Kirk.
So good evening, thank you, Dr. McNeil, Superintendent, and thank you, President Taylor and Vice President Cottle. Daniel Kirk, Lemon Valley Principal. We're going to start with elementary, in the sense that's where the foundation and all this kind of work, as Debbie Byersdorf talked about, we, we start this vertical alignment and this process to supporting our students in this recovery and right at pre-K, all the way through our elementary to our middle and our high school. I am super thankful for these two lovely ladies for welcoming me into this vertical. This is, I'm back at Lemon Valley, where I started my career in Washoe County School District, and I'm just super excited to get to work with these intelligent, amazing leaders in Area Five and our North Valleys verticals. So they're incredible, and they're going to speak kind of from what we do from elementary to middle, then to high. And for us in that vertical work, it really starts with that PLC process, that professional learning communities. And at the elementary level, from pre-K all the way up to fifth or sixth grade, depending on your elementary school, we start with those essential standards. What do we want our kiddos to know and be able to master and understand as they leave the one particular grade level to the next? So what do we want them to know as they, as our essential learning from kindergarten into first, or first to second, and so on and so forth? And that PLC work starts with identifying those essential standards that our kids need to know. And then we work vertically within our, our levels. At the elementary level, we vertically align across those essential standards, and we build what we call common assessments that track data and information on where our kiddos are doing and how they're progressing and growing to meet those essential standards over the one year's time. That really is a basis of really prioritizing some high quality, high expectations to that tier-one instruction for our students, to them to really meet standards and at their grade level, and to really allow us to recover and close achievement gaps at those different levels as they transition into the next grade level. That leads into kind of the work that we really prioritize at that fifth and sixth grade level for an elementary school. We connect in those vertical meetings as to say, okay, what does middle school sixth grade or seventh grade really need us to hit hard on and have as a priority that they need to come with the, these specific skills and mastered learning, understanding of the standards into the middle school? And that work really is a district-wide kind of similar output. All of our schools in these vertical meetings are focusing on this process to really have that alignment as we move through that vertical process for our students. And it really does allow us to have kind of that flexibility to prioritize those standards necessary for that vertical transition for our students. And so for North Valleys vertical, it really allows us as elementary schools to talk with O'Brien Middle School and Cold Springs Medical, Middle School, and say, okay, tell us what you need us to have prioritized so that they're ready for you, so they can be successful in that transition into middle school. And so I'm going to kind of segue, as we jump from elementary, we'll go into kind of middle school and what they do through that vertical alignment.
Thank you. Good evening, Melinda Baker, proud principal at O'Brien Middle School. So as Principal Kirk just described, that work is happening at the middle, the elementary, middle and high school level. And so it really allows us to capitalize on that continuity. And at the middle school level, we get to do that in both directions. So we send our, for example, we're sending our sixth grade team to Lemon Valley, and they get to collaborate about how essential standards are being mastered in maybe some areas of growth that are happening live, right now, fourth quarter. And those conversations are very purposeful and targeted, and we get to come back together and do things like formulate benchmark assessments that we will be using when those students arrive to us first quarter. So all students will benefit from that collaboration, and all students will have a jumping off point right when we begin the year, so that we can differentiate very specifically for our students' learning and our students' needs. And this, a similar conversation is also happening between our eighth grade teaching team that gets to go up to North Valleys High School to work with our freshman teams, they're dialoguing about the areas of strength and areas that are needing growth within essential standards. And they are actually able to consult us and help identify the specific essential standards that our eighth grade team, this coming up fourth quarter, will be focused on with a laser light intensity, so that those learning gaps begin to, to close before we even hit interventions like summer school. In addition to that, our, our lead counselor at O'Brien has created a social emotional learning needs assessment. So imagine when we come back for, for school first quarter next year, our incoming sixth grade students and seventh grade students will be able to take a benchmark that was collaborated upon by both the sixth grade level team, seventh grade level teams from O'Brien, and they'll also be taking the social emotional learning needs assessment. So we will have a very vivid idea right then and there of where our students are and what they need on both those planes. So the, the collaboration and springboard that creates is going to be very powerful and personalized, and that's really what we believe needs to happen. That's our, our, sort of our biggest tool right now is personalization, both on the social emotional learning side and the academic learning side.
Good evening. Desiree Mandeville for, oh, I got to say for the record, I always hear it, so, okay. Thanks for allowing us to be here tonight. We are always excited to celebrate our schools and talk about the amazing things that we have going on. Every principal, I think, is proud of their school, but I think this year more so than ever with the amount of collaboration and effort that has been put in to make this year even possible. And so to, I'm not going to reiterate everything they said, but obviously those, the, the academic side of the vertical alignment continues through ninth through twelfth, right? So we work really closely, especially that eighth grade transition year, with both our feeder middle schools, and they'll share data with us. Here's, here's our current math scores, here's how all the kids did on that final math assessment. They'll ask, we'll ask for S-Back, we ask for all different kinds of things that will help us place our students in the right, math is always a big one, right? And they'll write math placement so that they can be successful, or if they want to challenge up and take those honors levels courses. And then that scaffolds up, obviously, through ninth through twelfth grade, as, as students work to that pathway towards graduation. And so you'll see the, I'm going to use English for example, being a former English teacher, the ninth and tenth grade English teachers working together to make sure, especially this year, we weren't able to cover this skill, but we embedded it here, so we think you should spend a little more time here, and then that builds up and up throughout the process. On the SEL side of it, we, as Mrs. Curtis had mentioned, we do all different kinds of things, and I was writing so many things down that my paper got super full. But we, we do, we do so many different transitions and interventions that honestly, in the pandemic, have been hurt. And that's just the reality of the situation, so it's figuring out how to build those back. And we still have some of the basics. We have after-school tutoring, actually this semester, we weren't able to have it last semester, and that's virtual. And then we have virtual throughout-the-day tutoring, specifically math and English. And kids can teams in or zoom in to that class to get that support, ask some one-on-one questions, and that's what we've been able to embed with the loss of all the grant money and those different kinds of things. Other things that we have that I think are super important when you're talking about the vertical connection, I can't say enough about the work that our counselors do and the amount of family engagement that they do at our school. They own a student for four years, sometimes five. And they know, they learn as freshmen or incoming eighth graders, those parents, and then work to develop that relationship over time. over time and continue to build it, and they really get to know those students. And being here for, next year will be our 20th year, you know, we've had families come through, five and six siblings, and, oh, it's you again, yay, I'm back in this family, that kind of thing. And obviously, some of our former students starting to come through with their own children. So, just the, that's something that's very special about the North Valleys vertical. We're a very special community, and lots of people know different people, and we're also the only vertical that's K through 12, all feed into that one high school. And that makes us very special, and so, I just have to throw that out there because I think that's important for us. There's a ton more different interventions that we could, we could go on forever about, but I think that's the basics.
Well, I think that's fantastic, and certainly, it's very clear that none of you like your jobs. You don't, you don't like each other, you don't like your schools, and all of that, but it's just really exciting to see the, really, the collaboration between the three, the very intentional, right, collaboration about creating the best, the best environment for students, especially, right, especially right now. Trustee Cottle, Vice President Cottle, these are your peeps.
Yes, they are. I always enjoy visiting, visiting with you all at your schools, and I definitely appreciate the work that you all do and your teams and the way you represent North Valleys. And previous slides, we talked about chronic absenteeism, grades. I was hoping that you could give us a sense on how this setup that you have with the vertical meetings and the relationships between our principals and our teams, and how that is going to benefit our students in our work over the next few years in academic recovery.
Yes, Melinda Baker, principal at O'Brien. Absolutely. I think the first thing I want to emphasize is that the collaboration that we're referring to isn't something that only happens during fourth quarter when we're transitioning. Because we have the, our district leadership has supported our vertical meetings that occur monthly, we are able to strategize sort of as we go, and we're constantly learning about the specific upgrades that we can be implementing or addition that we need to have happen immediately as things are occurring, first quarter, second quarter, third quarter. So, to that end, what will happen is, for example, this fourth-quarter effort at O'Brien that is impacting literally what our teachers are going to be emphasizing with our students in a couple, in a month or so, right? That's so relevant, it's hot off the presses from Lemon Valley, from Alice, you know, Smith. So, I think that the benefit and how it permeates is that the work is implemented immediately, and the cycles of upgrading our practices are constantly and consistently going, because we still have a couple of vertical meetings this year. So, not only are we going to begin teaching the essential standards that they've consulted us on, but we are going to be building upon that work and checking in with each other at several points in time during fourth quarter. And that's just going to extend to, obviously, our first-quarter work where the same cycle will continue.
And to kind of piggyback off of like the chronic absenteeism, that is an alarming data to look at, and it's always something that, starting at the elementary level, we really do start to focus and put in place interventions. A clear example is, because we have this unique thing in the North Valleys, an example is, I have students that were showing up at their house every day to pick them up, and they have an older sibling that's over at O'Brien, and we have our truancy officers show up, my vice, my assistant principal, we pick them up for our school, we go and drop them off at O'Brien as well to get them to school. And so, we're in that collaboration vertically in the sense of working on those interventions, even to chronic absenteeism and failing grades. And so, that work is always happening for us outside of those vertical meetings and those kinds of things, but they are definitely things too. When we have that collaboration from them coming down to us or going into the high school, we can really specifically target students, hey, you really need to pay attention to this particular student or this particular family. We really put in place these interventions, they need to continue as they move into the next vertical or into the next school. And so, that vertical alignment continues year-round, all the time. We have conversations and meetings about students, how we're supporting the middle school student as well as the elementary students that's within our schools.
I'm going to piggyback as well. So, we also do, so, we're required and appreciate the students with an individual education plan, transitions that we do from eighth grade to ninth grade year, but we do that with all students. So, exactly what Mr. Kirk was talking about, we will, hey, heads up about this family, they need a little more support, or all the, they lost their home, or they had a death in the family, and, or this one needs a little more TLC, and, you know, maybe a big brother on campus, or something like that. And so, that starts really during that transition process, that spring semester of the year before they come, and we really take a look at trying to get to know those students. That's why Soon to Be a Panther Day is such an important thing, and we did the best we could with it this year, making it virtual. It's not perfect, and it's not what we would particularly love to do, but it, but it did work, and it's, we're getting lots of questions. For example, we have, we just did our course registration, we're slated to have 2,500 kids next year, and 1,800 of them have already completed their course registration for last year, for this next year, and over 90% of them were the incoming eighth-grade students. So, that's how we know that that transition is absolutely working.
No, that's, that's great, and I think, for me, this work is so important when, as a board, we talk about the new strategic plan and Portrait of a Graduate, college career readiness, and pulling everyone in and understanding that work starts at the elementary level. It's not a high school issue. Everyone's a part of that, and if it's starting in high school, it's really too late. And I do, and I, so I really appreciate that this collaboration is happening, so it will help that transition in our new strategic plan to be that much better. So, I think that that's tremendous. And Principal Baker, I see the construction fences are up, so I'm excited for you all at O'Brien. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you, and welcome. I just want to give you, hopefully, a grin, is, you know, I'm a new trustee, and so, I've started my rounds visiting the schools, and it's absolutely enlightening and heartwarming. And every school I've visited says the same thing, we are special. And I just, and I would have to say, yes, you are. And so, it's really nice to hear you say that and be so, so proud and happy about it. And Principal Kirk, I will say, thank you for saying pre-K. I really appreciate that, because although I would even say it starts in utero, we start with pre-K. Thank you for that.
Dr. Nicolet, we do draw the line at utero, just so...
I know, but that was just a personal feeling, okay?
I just want to go on record.
We're not going to do, okay, whatever. So, parents, families, whatever the family structure is, how do you engage, especially, I consider them, these days, our newest faculty members? How do you engage our parents, our families, in this vertical concept and the essential learning standards so that we're all moving together and we understand together? What are your specific strategies?
I would say that this year, more than other years, our communication with our families has become much more individualized and personal. So, typically, you'll see us, you know, running things like open house and family council meetings, where we bring the families in, and they can sign up to be on family council all year long, or they can drop in, and we host them and involve them in our decision-making for our school performance plan, or for, you know, our quarter rewards that are coming up. And those things are still happening. We're still engaging in those events virtually, but what has happened is that this year, there have been many, many, many more personal phone calls and conversations with families. Another example would be, we have an advisory teacher that is assigned to every student. That advisory teacher has maybe 25 to 30 students that are on their caseload, and there is, if not monthly, bi-weekly, sometimes weekly, communication happening directly with every single family from that one advocate. Another example would be that our families have the opportunity at any time to contact their counselor and request a team meeting. And this is, I know this is true of both our elementary and our high school, and in these settings, the counselor coordinates a meeting with all the students' teachers on their caseload, and it's sort of one forum for the parents to kind of get their questions answered. Sometimes it's just, there aren't any questions. Sometimes the parent is just kind of feeling a little bit distant and wants to be more informed, and we conduct those meetings virtually, and this year also, especially third quarter, some of them have also begun to be in person. And the nuances are just a lot more granular at this point, because though the larger events are still occurring, the world is requiring a little bit more attention, be paid to these concerns that are coming up, and certainly, the concerns are a little bit different. So, that's become more prevalent. And I would also say that the distance learning communities have become much more virtually engaged. So, for example, I have almost 100% of my families that are Connect Ed messages receivers are also email recipients. And so, the email correspondence between teachers and families are, has become very fluid, and then sometimes kind of follows a little bit of a text message-type pattern. And so, the level of communication is much more rapid and much more consistent, especially with our distance learning families, because those virtual ties are becoming much, much stronger. And we are seeing some of that with our hybrid communities as well, because our students are at home every other day. So, parents and students alike are reaching out virtually, because they've learned, sometimes they get a response from us faster via an email. And so, those communications are definitely a silver lining, I would say, to the circumstance, and that's what I would say is probably the biggest impact that we've discussed and that I've experienced at O'Brien.
Yeah, and those same kind of messages, we take what O'Brien Middle School wants to message, and we put them on our Connect Ed messages that go directly to our fifth-grade families specifically and only to them, so that not the entire school community is getting a message that they just hang up and don't listen to, but they know it's specifically targeted to them. We have counselor, my counselor is doing an incredible job, and I think all of our counselors across all of our schools do an incredible job to really support our families in this digital age. My counselor has asked me to put what she does as kind of a padlet opportunity, where she can answer questions to families and give feedback on kind of what that transition to middle school looks like, and support for course selection and that kind of stuff. But as well as, we bring forward that communication and engagement through many different models and systems. Not only do we use Connect Ed at the elementary level, we use a thing called Class Dojo, as well as our website. And so, we try to give that information out to our families in every opportunity and system that we have possible to engage them and get them aware of what's going on in that vertical aspect of how we're supporting their students.
Well, thank you for that, because I know that, you know this, and I know this, I'm going to speak for all of us, we know that when a student sees the collaboration and the partnership and the caring between teachers and administration and families, and they see that that group is surrounding them to support them, that is very, very important, and it makes a difference, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. We've got, trustee Tigpin?
Just a quick comment to piggyback off of what trustee Nicolet said. I feel like you all have established such a great collaborative effort here. It's amazing to see, feels like a small-town community in such a large school district, so I think that's very commendable and would love to see more of this across the district, for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Tigpin. Okay, why don't we move, why don't we go ahead and move on to our next slide? We're talking about grading practices and opportunities. So, we're going to thank again our amazing principals.
And you guys can sit right back down. Thank you. You're not going anywhere yet.
Okay, so...
All right.
Okay.
So, I'm over here now.
All right, Ms. Curtis.
And we are going to quickly discuss, or share with you about the Equitable Access Task Force, and we're going to just briefly share with you the work that they're doing on top of everything that is happening. This high school group who is driving the work behind our standard-based grading action research. We are lucky enough to have Dr. Doug Reeves work with our high schools and our task force in moving forward on our standard-based grading. And there are seven high schools who are participating in this endeavor. They are North Valleys High School, Wooster High School, HUG High School, McQueen High School, TMCC High School, Sparks High School, and Galena High School. And so, we are very proud that they are able to attempt to work with their departments, whether it's grade level or department level, and they are collaborating and working towards exploring the changes of grading practices during PLCs, with PLCs. They have monthly meetings as a cohort of seven high schools, and they also meet one-to-one and get some executive coaching from Dr. Doug Reeves on their own. So, I just wanted to share with that, you quickly with the work that's going, continuing forward. And in June, we should have, it's called a science fair, where the action research is brought together by each school, and they share out what is working and what isn't working, and what their plan is for next year. And next year, we are hoping that all high schools will participate in the standard-based grading, and eventually have our middle schools work with them and bring that forward for the following year. So, just trying to tie in everything that is happening, and then we also are moving forward with this great process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Superintendent McNeil, because I want to make sure we're clear, when we start talking about the standard-based grading and what that really means. Dr. McNeil?
Well, thank you very much, President Taylor. Really, we were so thrilled to have the opportunity to work with Dr. Reeves and his work around grading practices and equitable grading practices, and to make sure that a student has every ability and every opportunity to succeed in class. And so, this has nothing to do with a watering down of curriculum or making it easier. It is still an extremely rigorous curriculum for our students, but the work that these high schools are going to be approaching with Dr. Reeves and with one another really evens out some of the work that has been, not been able to be done within our school district. And so, we're really, you know, excited to get this opportunity. And so, Gina, I don't know if you want to go into just a little bit more about the percentages versus a straight A as far as the GPA, the 4.0, 3.0, 2.0, 1.0, and such?
Sure. So, when we're looking at standard-based grading, when we look at the percentages, so, for example, 90 to 100% is an A, 89% is a B, 70 to 79 is a C. And what we're looking at is, standard-based grading means you just give that a number. So, for example, an A would be a four, a B would be a three, a C would be a two, a D would be a one, and a zero would be an F. And so, instead of diving into what a 76% looks like as a C compared to a 71, which is a C, compared to a 79, which is a C, we're saying that that range is just one number of three. I don't know, or two, I guess that would be a two. Sorry, now I really confused you. And it just evens the playing field. It also, it assists with the concept of Fs and the 50% versus a zero. So, for example, when a student doesn't turn in their work, they are given an F, which is a 0%, right? And the work that they have to do to bring up their grade to a 60% is monumental compared if they just had a 1, 2, 3, or 4. And so, it gives the students, and it's happening at many levels. I know that Wooster at the IB program, they have a number system as well. I'm sure, Victoria, you're aware of that. And so, and this has been, this is a huge mind, mindset, mind shift, because it's difficult for some teachers to say, well, he didn't do anything, so I'm not going to give him a 50%. However, it's not fair to give him a 0% either. So, there's a lot of discussion, and Dr. Doug Reeves does an amazing job. He has written 30 books, he has done some action research, and he's able to answer every question that our principals are having, and at least leading them into the direction of having rich conversations with the staff. And seven of the schools are on board, and I'm happy to say that HUG High School last week had a virtual meeting with Dr. Reeves, and all of the teachers attended. And so, they are moving quickly into this standard-based grading. So, there's a lot of research on it. I'm happy to share more with you at another time, but, and I know we will be coming back giving you... giving you updates for the rest of this semester.
Well, thank you very much. And I asked the superintendent, and I'm glad you jumped in, to just give us more on that because the message, we don't want to send the message that we're watering down grading. That isn't what it means at all. In fact, it should help students. And I think one of the things that really lends to the credibility behind it is that's what's being used at the IB program. And you can't get too much higher than that. So, it isn't about watering things down to those who may be struggling a little bit. It's what we're also using at the higher level when you look at the IB. So, and I see Victoria nodding over there. So, I mean, it's, I thank you for the list of clarification because I don't want us to send that message. I know that's what it wasn't, but to give us more, so as we're talking in the community about it and what it really means, and then just the mindset, right, of how it helps students. You think, "I can go from a 0 to a 1 or a 1 to a 2 versus this number that, this percentage thing that might seem so much more astronomical to me." So, I look forward to that. I applaud the work with that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Long-term planning. Yep, I see Debbie getting ready. Gina, thank you so much. Now, the principals, I think you're free to go now, no? Just kidding, just kidding.
Oh, me.
Just kidding.
Just in case more questions come your way, you guys, right? We want you there. They're awesome, right? These three principals are awesome and, oh my gosh. So, thank you guys again. So, want to shift even more to talk about long-term planning that's in place right now. So, I think beyond spring intercession, spring break, summer, into the start of the new school year and then beyond. So, you've heard in the past about the Teaching and Learning Committee that is led by Chief Academic Officer Dr. Troy Parks and Area One, Area Superintendent, and Marie Dixon, who are with us this evening as well. So, this group came together under a different name, but this was the core group that came together almost a year ago to start putting together our learning packets, if you remember when our schools first closed. And how far they have come. There's over 80 people that are now involved in the Teaching and Learning Committee and the three subcommittees. They include classroom teachers, teachers that work in various district departments such as curriculum and instruction. They include site leaders, school site administrators, district leaders. I'm probably missing a few other folks as well, but there's over 80 people. It's a big, big group. And the leadership of the Teaching and Learning Committee actually presented to a few of us yesterday at our academic leadership team meeting on plans going forward for academic recovery and how they've organized themselves into these three subcommittees. So, I wanted to quickly talk about those today. Professional learning community support, PLCs, you've heard us talk about that. You will continue to hear us talk more and more about that because that is really the grassroots, that's the magic that's happening within our schools is our PLCs. So, whether you're a PLC of physics teachers at the high school level, seventh grade music teachers, or second grade, a second grade PLC at dance school, these are the people who know what's happening with their students and what they need to be focusing on to ensure our students are successful. We also have what is called the PLC Design Team. And that's a group of school principals that meet and help facilitate the vertical meetings that we heard Gina and our principals talk about earlier to ensure that there's ongoing professional learning and support for all of our principals through the PLC process. It's not an easy process. It's hard, it's hard sometimes because the work gets super, super hard, especially in the times that we're in right now. So, very important that we're providing support to them. We also have a subcommittee called the Academic Recovery Elementary Subcommittee that focuses on elementary education and are putting together, or I guess maybe I could say better, collecting tools around universal screening and resources for students, especially as we start the new school year. We've heard from our principals talk about that as well. It's going to be very, very important to know when our kids come back in August, what their needs are and what we need to better focus on. Bullet number 200, that's super important as well. So, connections and community. I was talking to Principal Mandeville earlier today and today was ACT testing. So, we had all of our juniors, that's a census test for our juniors and also for seniors who haven't taken it yet that needed to graduate. And you had in the building today, Dez, juniors on A schedule, B schedule, students that were on distance learning, and then seniors who needed to come in as well. And guess what? Some of those kids hadn't seen each other in almost a year. And I heard there was tears and cheers, and that was the staff, right? Not least of which the students. But when we start to bring our students back into buildings, you know, we've got, again, kids that have not stepped inside this building in almost a year. And we've got to be very mindful what it's going to look like when we start the next school year. Tier one resources and supports for our students. Remember, tier one curriculum that's in place, excuse me, for all students and the supports that we put in place to make sure our kids are meeting those essential standards. And then you'll also see some of similar bullets under secondary as well. What we've added there, the second bullet is master schedule considerations. In our next presentation, two of our area superintendents are going to talk more about master scheduling and what a intricate, difficult job that is to put together a master schedule at all levels, especially at the high school level. And then that last bullet is fifth-year seniors. So, in regular school years, our students who don't quite finish up at the end of four years or they're within that four-year cohort have the option in working with their school administrator to come back for a fifth year. Or maybe it's part of a fifth year. Maybe there's two credits they needed to make up and they can get that done by the end of the first semester of a fifth year. We had some barriers in place. We had a rather antiquated application that was in place and a few other things as well that we have gotten rid of as we headed into this school year. Really wanting our students to know that we welcome you back, we want you here. We, you may not graduate on time with that cohort, but we're going to get you into that next year graduation. And then I can add on there as well, RISE. RISE Academy. Gina Curtis and I had a meeting with that administration early this morning to talk about options for expansion of RISE as well to help students finish up. So, lots of work that will continue to happen. You'll continue to hear updates as well. But we wanted to share the work of the Teaching and Learning Committee with you this evening. So, there are no questions?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Let's see if there are any other questions. I know we've asked several along the way. I see student trustee Victoria, please.
Thank you, Madam President. This isn't really a question. I just wanted to add on to what Ms. Deborah Byersdorff had said. Today, I took the ACT, I'm a junior at Wooster. And it was really, it was, I had not been into school for a whole, almost a year. The closest I got to getting into a classroom was the school's office. So, I just wanted to say, all the principals did a great job setting that up and making students feel safe. And it was a great experience finally seeing all the students after a year. And it was, there was tears, there was like so much happiness. That test was hard, but like everyone got to see each other during the snack break and it was just a great opportunity.
Well, that's amazing to hear. That's something we know, just looking forward that students are able, right, to get, just get reconnected with each other. It's been a very long, long 11 months, almost 12 months for many and will be more for some more. So, that's, that makes me happy. That's good to hear. Other questions or comments?
I just have one thing to add on, again, Principal Mandeville. So, just on anecdote, well, not really anecdotal, it's hard data. So, on an average year, we'll miss about 50 students on ACT that end up doing the makeup or end up taking it as a senior. And this year, that only increased by 25 students. So, we only missed 75 students today. So, I think that goes back to the work of those individual calls, the family engagement, every single resource we can possibly imagine to communicate with families, talking to kids through Teams and forcing some of us older people to use this new technology. We used Instagram through our student leadership. I mean, just everything and anything that we possibly could do to try and engage the kids and like, "This is your opportunity, come." And it was almost overwhelming today. It was really exciting to see the kids.
That's very cool. And really, once again, kudos to your team and the other high schools in the district that went out of their way to really get students in, keep it safe, but realizing it's going to be exciting for them, but still create an environment, especially for those students who've distance learned this whole time because obviously they wanted to stay safe, but to create an environment where they still felt safe with all the juniors and the seniors that could get into, to be a part of it, so. Thank you very much. Ben, I see you're coming back up. Are you the closer or?
Yes.
Well, come on up. Oh, after the cleaning. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
And I'll be a quick closer. So, kind of, we just wanted to conclude this by committing to kind of moving forward and codifying some of this enthusiasm in our well-articulated plans. So, certainly, what you've heard from our schools, it's happening across the Teaching and Learning Committee. As Deborah Byersdorff said, it's going to land into our strategic plan, which I think nicknamed just now as Tears and Cheers. And all of that, so the two-year, you'll recall, the two-year strategic plan done in conjunction with the board will be the umbrella document for all this work going forward. You had a board workshop today, so we're, there's a whole bunch of planning work and kind of priority work in what should be funded. You heard Dr. McNeil talk about summer school and transportation. There's a list of about 13 big things that we're going to, that we want to put into the Estor Relief Fund, the Gear Relief Fund, we're kind of wrapping up this week with some mental health supports going forward. And then, as the new stimulus bill makes its way to LEA, to school districts, local education agencies, we'll have that list of priorities and a strategic plan to kind of put them under there and monitor going forward. So, that's the closing.
Well, no, that's an important piece. It kind of pulls it all together. Okay, it kind of pulls it all together. Other questions, comments? Dr. McNeil?
Well, I just want to thank the entire team for putting this presentation together. And it's never easy, right, to talk about some of this data, right, that's right there in front of us. And Ben, you say this all the time when we're talking about data. Behind every single point on this PowerPoint, right, is a child. And I just want to commend our principals and our team, our counselors, all of our teachers who have done just a tremendous amount of work as we come into this year and as we are going into the future. Because it is intentional and I really love the fact that the board was able to kind of see inside of what you all do every single day. Because it's important also for the board to understand, which they do because when they're in the schools, they get to visit with you, they get to see what's going on. But the intricate work, the intentional work that's happening within the committees, and what I love about this is that our committees are really built around the voices of our teachers and our principals. And so, I just want to commend all of the work. Thank you, Ben, for bringing this opportunity to our board and Debbie and all of our area superintendents, Paul. Without this work, we're not able to move forward with the important thing that we need to get done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Before we close this out, we do have some public comment. JJ?
Trustee Church has questions too.
Okay, hang on just a minute. Let's get this public comment, we'll come right back to trustee Church. Thank you, sir.
James Benton.
Welcome back, Mr. Benton.
Let's see. Good evening, Superintendent Trustees. I've been enjoying being here. Many issues have been brought up. I encourage the board to institute a Quality of Education Committee. This would help people to be involved with the process along with the school district. What will the goals be in one, two, or three, or four years? Advantages of having a committee is that you'll have experts, you can leverage resources, use networking, strategic planning. You can increase volunteers helping in the school district. Many retired people have expertise. This would be also an opportunity for a different group to evaluate the trustees' pay and check to see if it's comparable to other states or other positions. I personally believe that it's really low and should be changed. Also, there are other states that spend less money and have the same or better academic standards that Nevada does. Utah sends, spends about $7.6,000 each year per student. Be a good idea to send some scouts over there to see how they're doing and what they're doing. Maybe possibly pick up some ideas that they're using that could benefit Nevada. So, I encourage the board to start a committee on quality of education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
That's all I have.
That's it for public comment? Trustee Church, you have a couple of comments or questions, sir?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad I waited because I agree 100% with the last speaker, Mr. Benton. This is so troubling and I'm not blaming the school district. This is nationwide, but the absentee rate is unacceptable. We have to do something. Talking about it's not enough. And as a trustee, I don't have an answer. I don't know, you know, what to do. I've been listening, thinking, but I love the idea of a Quality of Education Committee that was just, and I love the idea of having some way they can make it up with a summer school, even a GED program, Truckee Meadows Community College. But we have lost a generation here, I mean, not a generation, but a year with, you know, over 50% absenteeism in some categories. And it's so troubling, the at-risk people, it's so troubling, the disparity by race and ethnicity. I am just extremely troubled. I don't have a good answer, but, and again, I'm not blaming the school district because it's a nationwide, but I do want to just think outside the box, be innovative, and let's do something. And again, I'll go back to the last speaker, he just nailed it. I agree with him 100%, so thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Church. Any additional comments? Okay, hearing none. Now, principals, I think you really can leave. Yes, I think so. Thank you so much for being here and thank you to Deputy Byersdorff and the team for sharing this really important information. There are certainly, certainly some things that are on the radar and it's good to see that some plans are indeed put in place and continuing to be put in place. So, how do we reach back, reach out and get these students and get these families back engaged and back involved? Because we do, I will agree with this with trustee Church. It's certainly troubling that we've had this loss of these gaps and we want to do all the things that we can to make that up. So, we appreciate it. Okay, why don't we do this? Let's take our, we'll take our dinner break. See, we're going to make this a 20-minute break and then we will come back at 10 till, according to my laptop right here, it will be 10 till 7. We'll come back and we'll do our last agenda item, our last, at least, presentation at that time, which is the COVID presentation, and it will be a pretty robust one, from what I can tell. Okay? 20-minute break, everybody, we'll be right back here. Thank you. We're in recess. All right, everyone, why don't we go ahead and jump right back into our, into our agenda? We're back on John, we're good to go?
Good.
Awesome. Okay, we're going to jump right into Agenda Item 5.03. This is Discussion and Possible Action to Review the COVID-19 Case Counts in Schools: Adequacy of Staffing Levels, which has to do with our guest teachers, and other applicable factors, as well as data indicators used to assess the COVID-19 community risk. To include, but not limited to, the risk assessment forms, test positivity, community-wide cases and hospitalizations. And if the data indicator suggests very high risk or above for up to seven days, we know we aren't in that case at all, thank God, then we'll, the board, if the board deems it necessary, we can consider relevant actions that may include changes to in-person hybrid, full-distance learning models. And we know because of the change in, that we received from Directive 038, there's going to be a lot more. change in, um, that we received from Directive 038, there's going to be a lot more information to share, um, in terms of how, uh, staff recommends that we, uh, begin to address those issues. So, that being said, let's go ahead. Dr. Lamarcas, I see you, you seem way, very far away, sir, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Taylor, Dr. McNeil, Board of Trustees, for the record, Paul Lamarcas. Uh, I think Dr. McNeil's going to kick us off. I'm going to stand back here only because I'm going to click and we've got a team of folks that are come, uh, going to come up and talk about implications. But, Dr. McNeil?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lamarcas. We're happy to bring this, as we know, this is a standing item, however, um, a little bit different tonight because we are going to be, um, kind of diving in into the Governor's Directive 038, um, and the areas that were relaxed as far as what that looks like, um, within our school district. I also think it's important, um, to celebrate the fact, as, as we were just talking about, that the Washoe County School District is one of the largest urban school districts in the country that has been open and that we've had full person in learning in our elementary schools, uh, five days a week for our, uh, vulnerable populations and then for, um, our middle and our high schools on the hybrid. Um, and so I just, I wanted to throw that out there because a lot of times we talk about reopening and really, our schools have been open and so much work has been done, uh, for all the right reasons. And the board, you know, this July and August, uh, the board made some very, very difficult decisions, um, around that, around face masks and mitigation efforts and social distancing and transportation. Um, and it's because of those efforts that we have been able to be where we are today. Our very aggressive, um, uh, exclusion, um, policies and, and what we've been able to do with Student Health Services and, and the strike team. And so, we're going to dive into that. Um, and I know Dr. Lamarcas is going to walk through some, um, good trend data that we are seeing, that you all have heard about in the news as far as case counts, positivity rates, um, across our region. So, with that, Dr. Lamarcas?
Thank you. Um, and we do, we do, this is really encouraging and we do have some good news to share. I do want to remind us, though, as we look at this, that we're not out of the woods. Uh, there is a lot of cases, um, still. Uh, as we know, as a nation, we unfortunately, um, witnessed over 500,000 deaths so far. Some of the estimates are that we may go as high as 600,000 or higher. So, we are not at all out of the woods, but we do have good news, I think, today to talk about. So this is the TMRPA Risk Meter. Uh, it says we're in the orange region. I want to talk about that in just a second. Um, this next page is just to really show, uh, that the TMRPA folks have really kind of made this a more robust site, more accessible to a broader audience. Uh, this is a Spanish version of the meter, which is now available. There's a lot of data available at the website. Um, this is a trend, uh, across all the different indicators. And what you can see is that, uh, many days in the last, uh, week, a little longer in the week, we've actually been in that yellow region. Um, but, and to be cautionary, um, there's been a decision not to kick down until we've been there for long enough so that we have confidence that we're not going to kick right back up. And so, today's score is actually at a 4.5. It was at a 4.5 the other day, uh, when we originally posted the administration. Uh, so that's very good news, especially when you think about us being up at 13, uh, late in November. Here's our dashboard, uh, as of, of last night. Again, uh, we are in the high-risk region, but we're at a score of 4.5. So we hopefully, knock on some wood, will be in that yellow region here, uh, pretty quickly. Our average daily case counts per 100,000 is at 7.2. So you heard, you've heard me say for, for months now, don't forget about that threshold that Harvard talks about at 15 per 100,000. So we're less than half of that at this point. As a community, that's a good sign. Test positivity just within our county, uh, based on the state website, is at 7.3%. That, again, the WHO organization says you should be at below 5%. Uh, we were at about 21% right before Christmas. So, again, good trend. Um, hospitalizations, they have not ticked up very much. We've had 86 youth that were hospitalized, um, since the onset. Five were currently admitted. And, and so this is another, uh, good indicator for us. We know that it's not hitting youth, uh, to the extent it's hitting our adult population. This is, again, one more picture. Uh, again, the blue line is our adult population, 19 and above. The orange line is our high school aged population. Green is elementary aged and yellow are our infants and toddlers. Uh, this is community-wide. This isn't our schools. But what you can see in the far right is the case counts for all of the youth are below, uh, I think, five in this particular slide. They're at the lowest level they've been at since, I think, mid-June. So really good trend data, uh, going on right now. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. McNeil. Um, so we'll move on with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lamarcas. So back on February 17th, the governor and our state superintendent presented, um, the Emergency Directive 038. And that covered several areas, um, within, uh, the COVID crisis. And so the directive paves the way for in-person learning, uh, for all students. And once again, just as a reminder, we have in-person learning within the Washoe County School District. But what this allows us to do is to expand the occupancy levels, um, within our schools, the lesser of 75% of maximum fire code or 250 persons. So the lesser of those two, the executive directive, allows us to do that. And then importantly, social distancing. So right now, we have three feet. The board approved three feet of, uh, social distancing between student to student in our elementary schools. You were allowed to be able to do three feet within the middle school population, but the board decided to be very cautious for all the right reasons and to approve a six-feet social distancing from per, uh, student to student. And so the Governor's Directive allows us to go down to three feet, student to student. It still mandates six feet from student to adult and adult to adult. Importantly, transportation. This has been, um, a high concern, uh, for school districts across the state of Nevada. What this executive directive allows us to be able to do is to increase occupancy right now within our buses to 66%, which equates to about two students per seat. It was at 50%. So this will allow us to do some really different types of, um, transportation. I know Mr. Martin is here and Mr. Lee is here, um, to go through what those, um, expanded opportunities are going to be for transportation. But again, uh, from 50% to 66%. Um, obviously with face coverings, uh, face coverings would still be mandated within all of our school buildings and, and all of our district offices. However, the, um, guidance, um, for the, uh, Governor's Directive does allow for some flexibility around recesses and music and performing arts. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. And then, uh, importantly, for high-contact athletics, as you all know, um, we, uh, submitted a letter to the Nevada Department of Education to allow for high-contact sports, which would be football. Um, and so that, that happened, uh, this last week. So our students were able to attend a practice. Um, but we'll go into detail, um, around, um, the athletic, um, uh, parameters for this year, or for the rest of this year. And then, how we wanted to lay this out are some practical considerations, um, and how we're going to be presenting it. If you can, oh my goodness, what is that? That is, there we go. Okay. It's like, where did that come from? So, we're going to be talking about, um, several different, um, areas within our school district today. So, teaching and learning, um, and what some practical considerations are. Um, in the operations, I mentioned transportation, but obviously we have nutrition services and housekeeping. Importantly, health and safety around vaccinations, contact tracing, and housekeeping again. And then, uh, the budget. And we'll talk a little bit about budget implications as well. So, we really just wanted to kind of set the table for the board today to really kind of, uh, allow you to see what this Governor's Directive, um, will allow us, our schools to be able to do. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Emily Ellison, our Chief HR Officer.
Good evening, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, Emily Ellison, Chief Human Resources Officer, for the record. Uh, as we can, as we contemplate the implications of this new directive, employees, of course, must be a substantial consideration and we must recognize that there's really a continuum of employee perspectives as it relates to any changes. I'm sure that doesn't come as a surprise. Uh, the spectrum ranges from, let's get back to normal yesterday, all the way to feelings of extreme fear, anxiety, and vulnerability. Within that range, you have the added complexity of employees who have ADA accommodations in place or who may have someone at home who is immune compromised or vulnerable to COVID. Some of our employees are also living with greater risk of infection or complication because of other non-health-related factors. I've yet to come across anyone who doesn't want all kids in school as soon as possible, but within that continuum that I talked about, I've identified at least six categories or buckets of employees. And I'll share them today just to provide a little bit of backdrop for you, uh, and context for this decision-making. I mentioned the, let's get back to normal yesterday folks. Uh, they're ready for, and they're enthusiastic about taking steps that feel like the normal that we used to know. We will have employees who are supportive with questions and concerns. Uh, there are definitely folks who are working in person who have accommodations, so they might have additional PPE that we've provided or other types of accommodations, and they have questions and concerns about any, uh, changes that might be contemplated. We also have folks who are working remotely right now and, um, may not have accommodations in place. So, we have some buildings where the physical configuration of the workspace doesn't allow for social distancing. My office is a great example. I've got two and three people in offices that are designed for probably one person. And so there's folks working at home on a rotating schedule, um, in order to accomplish social distancing, right? There's people in that category that will have questions or concerns. Then we've got people that are working remotely who have the same questions or concerns, or the sixth bucket would be working remotely and have substantial concerns about any proposed changes. We also know that people move through these feelings and this spectrum of, uh, perspectives based on their ever-changing pandemic experience. And honestly, this probably oversimplifies a bit the complexity of what our, our employees are experiencing every day, but it does illustrate the complexity of the circumstances and, again, provide the backdrop for decision-making. To that end, we're working closely with, with our employee associations to collaborate and understand employee perspectives and respond accordingly. And last Friday, we met with our building principals and other administrators. Yesterday, we met with the leadership from each association in order to understand the questions that they have regarding this new directive as well. You'll see many of their, uh, thoughts and comments reflected in my comments. As I review considerations from an employee perspective, again, you'll see that many of these considerations are interrelated and complex. You will also see that I'm highlighting considerations from a broad-based district perspective, but many of my colleagues will highlight employee considerations in more granular detail specific to their functional area. From a staffing and coverage perspective, we continue to experience challenging, challenges in filling positions that are fundamental to operations and student services. For example, we're experiencing critical shortages in bus drivers, nutrition services, and classroom support. I am proud to report for our first, uh, virtual job fair today, we had 70 attendees, so that is good news. We've also been providing regular updates on guest teachers, which I think is another important point of consideration. To date, 300 new applications have been received and 150 new guest teachers have been added to our system. Thankfully, we're not experiencing the 30 to 35% unfilled rate we were experiencing before we temporally transitioned to distance learning. However, in our current model, despite this tremendous effort and progress, we are still experiencing an unfilled rate of 15 to 20% a day. That means about 70 assignments go uncovered and need to be, excuse me, covered at the school site. Any changes to the models that creates additional demand could quickly create a strain on the system that we might not be able to quickly respond to. It's also worth mentioning that the Governor's Directive that allowed us to hire emergency substitutes, the same provisions that are available to rural counties all the time, expires tomorrow. And so while we can continue to utilize our emergency license holders, no new emergency licenses will be issued for Washoe candidates. I'm going to pause for just a moment. Pardon me. Leaves of absence are another important consideration, and we currently have 338 employees on a leave of absence. Employees are utilizing a variety of leave types depending on their negotiated agreement. And as we contemplate any potential changes to the learning models, it's important to understand the operational questions that may arise. For example, some employees may want to return from their leave sooner than expected, so will need to answer questions about what happens to the people hired to fill their positions for this year. Or some employees may not be comfortable with changes and initiate a leave request for the remainder of the year. Will need to make sure to attend to coverage of those positions at that point. The Americans, excuse me, accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act add another increased layer of complexity. We currently have roughly 350 people with some form of COVID accommodation in place. These range from additional PPE to distance learning instruction assignments. While 183 educators are supporting distance learning with, through the ADA accommodation process, many more support distance learning in some form or fashion, and a change would touch every educator in the district. We also have to consider things like what happens to current accommodation requests, and will we see an increase in accommodation requests? As we think about the practical implications of timeline, I'll just kind of refresh everyone on what the ADA process looks like. And employees have rights under the federal law that allow for accommodation in order to perform the essential functions of their position. In order to determine what is considered essential and, uh, what is considered a reasonable accommodation, the interactive process is convened in order to review with the employee and the employer, in this case, the, usually human resources and, um, the site administrator. We look at the needs of staff and students, both in-person and remote, and determine what's, what's possible. So any substantial change to the models may require the reconvening of the interactive process for those employees, which is something to consider. When it comes to leaves and accommodations, I will say the current model is a delicate balance of meeting student needs while also balancing the needs of employees. Any change represents a potential for additional strain on the system. To that end, we must also be mindful of our contractual obligations and know that strain on the system can make those obligations more challenging. When the strain on the system increases but resources do not, we run into the challenges that we experienced before our temporary transition to distance learning. For example, things like the duty-free lunch period and preparation time become increasingly challenging. Our employees have truly embodied the spirit of all hands-on-deck in making everything that we have done this year possible. But any plans to change our current, excuse me, our current approach should also include plans for ensuring that we can do so while meeting these obligations. Finally, vaccines are just one piece of the puzzle. We are very proud of the work that we've done in this area, and we estimate that about approximately 75% of our staff elected to receive the coronavirus vaccine. It is understandable that people may interpret this as a sign that it's time to flip the switch and get back to normal, but please remember, two doses of the vaccine are required, and we will, we will complete the second round of doses for staff who participated in our, um, mass vaccination efforts the weekend that spring break starts. Many people are still in process. Although we're encouraged by high vaccine interest and response rates, guidance regarding post-vaccine protocols, travel, how long the vaccine remains effective, and the role that vaccinated people may play in asymptomatic transmission of the virus continue to evolve. This evolution of understanding must also inform our decision-making. Before I transition to our next presenter, I would offer, presenters, I'm sorry, I would offer these thoughts in summary. The things I've shared tonight are the big-ticket items when it comes to employee considerations. Um, I'm sure many of you have experienced the difficulty of explaining the complexity of our system to anyone who doesn't live in it. Um, but I think if you think about these bullet points, uh, any change to the models at this point represents probably the addition of about 10 to 20 sub-bullet points in terms of, um, policy changes, um, updated, uh, procedure modifications and action to be taken. And so I really just share this information to give you a little bit of context, um, for what, just what it looks like from an employee perspective. And like I said before, we have a pretty fragile balance right now between available resources, employees, and students. And so I would just, uh, urge consideration of these things as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board, again, Joe Ernst, area superintendent. And what we wanted to do this evening is walk you through some of the site considerations that are in front of us. And the first bullet there you can see talks about balancing the continuity of learning while increasing opportunities for students to attend school more regularly. And to put this in a bit of context, we know that we have been able to make tremendous progress when we have moved from our first semester to our second semester. Some of that progress has come around stabilizing the learning models that all families are staying committed to, and that has really helped get the appropriate balance for each of the teachers and the number of students that they've been serving and working with. We, we also know that our schools have, in this commitment to learning models, there are unique situations and circumstances, and our schools have worked with each family individual when those unique circumstances require some reconsideration of that learning model to best meet the needs of that student. And so individually, our schools are really working with families and students. What we also know when we talk about attending school more regularly, earlier tonight, we've heard different comments and ideas around intercession. We know our high schools will all be running spring intercession. Our schools have been running after-school tutoring, will continue to do so, continue to expand that option. We've had Saturday school as an additional way that we're helping students. We have summer school, which was talked about tonight, and we also have our extended school year for special education students. To give you a little context around some creative options that are currently occurring in school, schools are already well aware of our distancing requirements and the percentage of capacity in each room. So for example, we have Pine Middle School, and Pine Middle School, they're running two really creative approaches. What they're doing is they are bringing in some targeted students to help support them. So if they're on a hybrid learning, on their B-day, they come and they spend a little bit of time at school, couple of hours, and they help reallocate resources in the building to support those students to make sure that they're getting their work done routinely. They have another program they call Friday Night Lights, where they have been serving up to 100 students after school and Friday, opening up their gymnasium, so they have bigger space, opening up their cafeterias, so they have larger space, and the ability to tutor and make sure students in this situation can complete their work and turn it in before they leave on that Friday. And so what's happening is schools are identifying individual approaches right now that best meet their learning schedules. And I'm going to walk us through some schedules in a bit, but what we will continue to be mindful of is that each of our schools, we have a lot of variation in our system around the way that we're providing hybrid and distance learning, and we have a number of schedules to contend with. So I'm going to talk with you about that in just a little bit more detail in a bit. When you look at the second bullet there, increasing social opportunities to all students through the opening of activities, sports, and increased access to playgrounds. We know that there has been a longing for our students to engage in things beyond school, in those social activities. I think there is great excitement right now around sports and the recent guidance from NIAA in allowing our high school sports to move forward. You can hear it in the schools, you can see it on the practice fields, there is excitement. We've also been able to gradually implement guidelines to increase activities that are occurring at schools. Recently, we have worked with ROTC to be able to expand the events and what they are offering for their students. And so there is a real conscious effort right now occurring to engage students academically and increase that social engagement as well. I think down in our elementary schools, our kids and schools have been terrific. They have had some pretty limited opportunities at recess, they have stayed really well within our guidelines, their cohort groups, they've stayed with their classes, and they have found some things to do. I think as we continue to think about the reopening or the expanding, there certainly is some consideration around now opening those playground structures and allowing our students onto those playground structures as an additional way of continuing to increase those kind of social opportunities. Certainly, you have to keep them in cohort groups, you have to keep your safety practices in place, but another place where you have an option of kind of increasing some interaction with students. The, the next one is the one that I'll try to spend some considerable time on here, and this is the one that I think when we met with our principals on Friday was some compelling feedback that we received from them. And, and so there is a bona fide difficulty in adjusting a second semester instructional schedule that we're already halfway into and working within those capacity guidelines to have all students remain in their current classes. So there was a slide there that kind of caught everybody off guard, and even when we pull it back up, it may catch you off-guard a little bit, but what that is, that's an example of a high school master instructional schedule. You can see to the far left in each of those columns, you'll see different teachers. At the very top, you'll see the number of periods, first period, second period, and so on. And typically, in those class sections, what you'll get is the ability to put 30 kids in those sections or 35 students in those sections. And what happens is, is we fill those core sections, and then we have to look at elective availability and start to put students in there, but work within the confines of not making classes too large. Well, now what we know is that we have received some guidance around 75% and three feet. When you look at the three feet aspect, that has a number of things to, for us to think about. We've done some preliminary review, both at the site level and at the district level to look at the number of classes, because intuitively, when we start to think about it, we think about hybrid schedule. I've got 17, I've got 18 kids on my A-day, I have 18 on my B-day. I put them together, that gives me 36, but in that classroom with three feet, the capacity's 26. Therefore, I've got 10 students now that we're going to have to figure out some ways to accommodate because we won't be able to put them all together. So in doing that, we looked at our high schools, and right now, we currently see approximately 250 classes across the district that would be on the high side if you bring both hybrid sections back, okay? And what we also have done now in working with a number of middle school principals is look at their capacities, and it appears the percentage of overcapacity that will be in those situations is even greater than it is in high school. Okay, so if we want to go back to the slide, JJ, thank you. And so to kind of walk you through that, a middle school principal recently, over the weekend, because everybody, as it's been said earlier, and I think throughout the evening, all of us believe kids are going to do better when they're fully in-person. But as others have talked about, we're working through a number of variables to make sure we get there safely. And in working with middle school principals, some of what we've looked at, one principal took an analysis of his schedule and what would be required. When he ran the analysis at 75%, he was going to have to take 18 classes, think back to that instructional schedule, and reconfigure them. When we say reconfigure, what that means is they may have a new teacher for the fourth quarter and the first time of the school year, they may have different periods, their schedule may change, and they might be in different electives. And I would say there's a, there's a high degree of certainty this would happen. When the same principal took the analysis at three, at three feet, we ended up having 50 classes accounted for. And so again, what happens with that is this is a process, this master instructional process, we heard Mrs. Mandeville tonight talk about course selection and the beginning of that course selection and the high numbers that she had already in preparation for next school year. This is a process that typically begins January and can run all the way through the summer to refine it and work to give kids their choices, their best choices, the choices they want for their classes. So that, that's a little bit more as we're kind of thinking about it. The other thing that we have done is we charged our principals this year with designing models that meet their students and staff and unique compositions of their building. And what that's created is we have a lot of variation in our system around schedules and around the actual learning models. So for example, we have some schools that have block scheduling, we have some schools that are teaming, we have some schools that have a straight seven-period day, we have some schools that are offering synchronous learning. I'm teaching my students in class and those from afar, okay? And then we have some schools that their distance learning is full edgenuity. And so that puts a lot of variation in our system, which further can complicate working through all of the variables that are accounted for. The other thing is, as you start to look at some of these sections, by taking those hybrids, let's say we look at a synchronous school, school that's offering synchronous learning, we take our hybrids, A and B, we put them together, but they're also providing not only now for the 30, 34 kids, whatever number they're, they're working with, but they're also now providing distance learning. So their, their numbers on a daily basis is really increasing. And so I would say that when we met with principals, really, these concerns around scheduling is really what had been brought forward. When we look at it, there can be some real trade-offs if we move schedules around, and for the first time in the fourth quarter of the school year, we're putting a student in front of a brand-new math teacher. That, that can really have some trade-offs, and that's something that would occur as a result of having all hybrids. Then the other, the other aspect, we start to kind of get into those logistics within a school, and we look at large gatherings. And if, at Spanish Springs High School, our biggest high school in the district, 2,600 students, if we had them, they have one lunch period, and they would have 1,600 students on a closed campus working through lunch. And I think Lianka may be speaking with this a little bit later in terms of nutrition services and models, but if you think about all that will be required around supervision and spacing with that number of students, let alone making sure that they have their lunches within that time period and getting out lunches that quickly. So that's, that's some other things. Of course, we'd have to maybe look at passing and hallways now with 1,600 students and how that might, might have to be reconsidered. And with this, we would really be looking, and Emily had talked about some of the personnel aspects, but with, with this, you would certainly be looking at having to have additional personnel at schools. Think back to the example when we could take 26 kids, put them in that classroom, but now I have 10 kids that still aren't in that classroom. And this is, again, based on kind of capacity and class numbers. I think I'd like to end it on a, on a bright note as I, before I turn it over to Lauren here, and that's in our elementary schools. We have talked about some of the creative approaches that our elementary schools have done this year. And in order to stick within the three feet and 50%, we've had to create what we call overflow rooms, where we're taking students who are in-person, they're actually learning from afar in the school building, back into their classroom so that we can manage the correct numbers in the classroom. In this instance, what we would be able to do is take some of those and actually get those back in to the classrooms where space allows. And so there are some kind of encouraging things that can come as well when you start to look at an elementary school schedule. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Ms. Ford.
Madam President, Superintendent McNeil, Board of Trustees, Lauren Ford, area superintendent for the record. I'll be addressing the next item, balancing current responsibilities. On your slide, we've listed a few of what the principals have coming up this semester: state testing, hiring, evaluations, IP transition meetings that are North Valley's vertical discussed, graduation, and end-of-the-year planning. Additional students in the building will require additional contact tracing. We know as a system that the heavy lift for contact tracing has fallen on our principals, our school nurses, health services, that would rise, we know that. All state, all state testing schedules have been submitted by our middle and high schools and elementary schools. Additional students in classrooms will cause a revision to all of those testing schedules. One of our principals gave an example, he has set up an excellent schedule so that in-person students are getting tested and hybrid students will still be getting academic instruction at home. So he feels that education will be continuing with those hybrid students as he goes into the testing season. With this change that the governor has proposed with 75% capacity, if he brought back more students, that would take everything to 100% testing instead of having those learning opportunities. Schools begin hiring the week after spring break. So on March 2nd, all of our principals will receive their allocations. They'll have new openings at some schools, some overages at some schools that they have to account for, and then for the schools that have open positions, they'll begin hiring after spring break. Another consideration is the evaluations. A lot of principals had set up evaluations through their pre-conference. The schools went, or classrooms went to distance learning. They paused those observations to honor the teacher's preparation for when they had a pre-conference and rescheduled those observations for a later time. In addition, on April 19th, our evaluations are finalized and due. A lot of principals use spring break to finalize those requirements, finalize those evaluations as a time of quiet at their school to be able to do so. This timeline to adjust instructional schedules is short. Joe spoke to how long, and the principal at North Valley spoke to getting course requests now. This timeframe to make an adjustment is really short and tight on them. So one other important piece is end-of-year activities. A lot of times, the principals are using this time of the year to plan special events at the end of the year. The increased capacity and having the seniors together this year would be amazing, and they would have time to plan for those special social-type events. As you're all aware, last school year, we were unable to have those end-of-the-year type of events. The next item is additional resources will be needed at the school level. As Joe has alluded to, each school would have to take a careful look at their schedule and identify the number of additional, additional teachers they might need. This will have a substantial impact, both financially and impact, as Emily stated, on our system. Many need to have, many of the principals need to have, sorry, let me rephrase it. Many schools may need additional supports, and so we may have to look at our licensed staff across our district and maybe pull some of those to help fourth quarter at schools for the remainder of the school year, which would then have an impact on their current duties. Some schools will have to adjust actual rooms and capacities. If they bring back the students to a math course, they may have to move them to a different room in the building if it's possible, sometimes that's not possible, so they would have to do what Joe suggested and split the children up to different teachers. and split the children up to different teachers. We met, so the last item is setting up principal meetings. So we did meet with the principals on Friday, and we heard that, um, we heard lots of feedback around advantages of maintaining our current learning models to support the students. We heard in, overall encouragement with the opening of sports, sports and additional social opportunities for students. Um, they explained the importance of a decision in order to begin to even plan, um, for what would be considered a monumental, if not impossible, task at the secondary level. So I want to give you one other example. Um, the master schedule we saw today, we have photos, and we went to see North Valley's master schedule. Currently, North Valley's has 21 sections of freshman English. So with that board that you saw, one of those sections at North Valley's is English, and in there, there's 21 sections of freshman English. If they increase the capacity and numbers, like Joe explained, right? The 36 and down to 30, or 10 students having to go to another room, they have to look at 21 English sections, how each one would be impacted with capacity, and then how many additional sections of English they would need. They have to do that for each core content. Math, science, social studies, English, ROTC, PE, electives, CTE, foreign language, to name a few. Thank you, that's what we have.
Who's up next?
Uh, Dr. McNeil, thanks to both of our area superintendents, and thank you also for taking the, the opportunity to, um, talk to the site administrators, talk to the principals and get their feedback on it.
And I believe, um, Dr. Lamarcus, we have Victor Sherbandi for athletics.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent McNeil. So good evening, President Taylor, Vice President Cordell, Superintendent McNeil, and members of the board. For the record, Victor Sherbandi, Executive Director, Strategies Office. So just like Lauren and Joe just alluded to, there is a lot of buzz right now in the athletic world, and I was asked tonight to speak to you about two items pertaining, um, to this athletic world. And, uh, last Wednesday, as Superintendent McNeil alluded to earlier, Governor Sisalak issued Directive, uh, 038 last Wednesday. And for the first time in almost a year, it allowed for close-contact sports, uh, to be played. And for tonight's purposes, we're talking primarily about football. And so football, along with wrestling and basketball, kind of came off of that no-play list. And, uh, it does require that each of our high schools take daily temperature checks and also conduct a COVID-19 screener or questionnaire on all of our athletes, coaches, game workers, and referees every day before practice or before a game. It also requires something that's very new, something that we haven't done before. And that's the testing of our football athletes, coaches, and game workers. And, uh, when I say testing, I'm referring to COVID-19 testing. And so we've been working extremely hard over the past few days to develop a very comprehensive testing program for our football players, coaches, and game workers in all 11 of our comprehensive high schools. And we are also working very closely every day with the NIAA to ensure a safe return to play. The rules that are outlined in the directive are very rigid. And if a player or coach ends up testing positive on any given week, and, and I think I didn't mention that these tests would have to be conducted weekly. But if a player or a coach, if they test positive on any given week, it could jeopardize the entire team from being able to practice or play for 10 days as they're in quarantine. And so that really will depend on a number of close contacts and the extent of that exposure. So we had issued guidance, um, at the beginning of our winter sports season, which has concluded, and we actually just started our fall sports season last Saturday. And that guidance that we issued in early January was out of an abundance of caution. And we decided that the other, the other item I was going to talk about tonight was on spectators. And we decided that for a variety of reasons, we were not going to allow spectators at our winter sports, uh, season. And it was a very tough decision, a lot of conversation, uh, went into it. And it turned out that the only sport during our winter sports season that was able to go was our ski programs. And, and so our, our wrestling and basketball teams were unable to play, and those schedules were vacated by the NIAA. So some of those reasons that we decided on no spectators was we really were trying to be mindful of the positivity rates in Washoe County at the time and doing everything that we could, as we've done all school year long, to limit the spread of the virus. And we also, uh, looked very closely at all of the, uh, restrictions and all of the guidance that came out of the NIAA. Um, and so although Directive 038 that just came out last week does allow for spectators, it also says that we would have to abide by all of the guidance and safety procedures that the NIAA and the governor's office have, have prescribed. And so we know that that would put a lot of pressure, additional pressure. You've already heard of a number of things that would add pressure to our schools and our administrative teams in our schools. But this also would add a lot of pressure to our admin teams. And we feel as though they're already stretched very thin this year. Um, and, you know, you've heard about the implications of potentially returning to 75%, which Lauren and Joe and Dr. Lamarcus have already talked a little bit about, as well as Emily. Um, so some of the things that schools would have to implement if we were going to entertain the idea of having spectators at our athletic events would include each school would have to develop a plan, a comprehensive plan for developing single-point of entry and exiting, um, that school. We would also have to mark off areas in our stands or bleachers for social distancing so that we wouldn't have spectators sitting closer than six feet to each other. They also would have to, uh, our administrative teams in our high schools would also have to constantly monitor spectators to ensure that they are wearing face coverings and practicing social distancing. And then when they, uh, if, if spectators chose not to do that, then we would have to address that. Um, they would also have to, uh, schools would also have to, in addition to the athletes and the coaches and the referees and the game workers, they would also have to perform temperature checks and COVID-19 and, and go through the COVID-19 screener with every spectator that entered, uh, either the field or the building. And the NIAA also, in their guidance, recommends that if we do, as a district, entertain the idea of spectators, that we would somehow limit spectators. And one of their recommendations would be to immediate family household members only. We feel that this would also put our administrative teams in an awkward position for having to decide, you know, which family members or friends could watch the game and which ones could not. And, and one of the reasons why that's important is because when you have support groups like band or cheer or dance, and you have the, the players and the coaches, and then you add on, um, any spectators, all of these things contribute to capacity limits. And so that would also be challenging for several of our schools. So as a district, uh, we're still deciding what our position should be regarding spectators for our upcoming, uh, fall and spring sports seasons. And I, I think with that, that's the end of, of my slide, but I'm obviously happy to answer questions at the end or whenever, whenever you feel it's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Sherbandi.
And I don't know who.
Well, we're, we're gonna have a few questions to jump in right here, so just hang, hang tight for just a moment, if, if you would. Uh, Trustee Thigpen?
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions on the, um, on the testing for athletes and staff and everyone involved. Um, did you say it was daily or weekly or both? And then also, um, who pays for the tests? Where do we get the money for that? Especially at that, it seems very, very frequent that we're gonna have to test folks.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee, for the question. First of all, the, the requirement is testing weekly. And so we would have to test our athletes and our coaches and our game workers every week before they play their, their game that week. And in looking at the schedules, games right now are scheduled for either Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, depending on the level of football, whether it's freshman JV or varsity. And so weekly, in, in regards to paying for the tests, the state has, to my understanding, they have donated the tests to us to get this done. And they are the Binax antigen tests.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. Vice President Cordell?
Thank you, Madam President. So if the test is an antigen test, if, if the, if any member of the program's coached, athlete, tests positive, then they would have to go get a PCR to confirm the positive? Would that be right?
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question, Vice President Cordell. Yeah, that's, that's in the, um, in the guidance that we're preparing right now. If, if a coach or a student were to test positive at their school site on any, um, on the day that we're doing the testing, right now, we're looking at testing on Wednesdays because it's an early release and it gives our nurses and staff more time to test on those, on the, on that day. Then that, that coach or that player, uh, would have the option of kind of appealing the result of that antigen test by going to schedule a PCR exam. And then, once they got the results back from that PCR exam, if it were negative, then our thought would be that that player or that group of players, if there were more players excluded, could return to practice. If that PCR test was positive, however, then that player or that coach or that group of players that were affected would have to be in quarantine for the 10 days.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I would, I would recommend that, um, an antigen or a PCR test be required to confirm a positive antigen because sometimes antigen tests give a false positive. And, uh, I do think that it's important for the well-being of, of everyone involved that that test get confirmed so that everybody knows if that was a positive or not. I don't think that should be something that is necessarily, um, optional. It's not, doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen, and we've seen that at the collegiate level. So I don't know, um, that may already be in place, but it kind of sounded like it was up to the individual if they wanted to go get a PCR to, to confirm a positive antigen. This is something I would, I would recommend. Thank you.
If I could just comment quickly on that, just for the record, Victor Sherbandi, again, uh, I'm being, I've been told from our nursing staff that the antigen tests that we are giving are 95% accurate, just for the record.
I, I appreciate that, thank you, uh, Mr. Sherbandi. I, I will say that, I, I have heard just from a research standpoint that you, you, you still get some false positives on that, so I can certainly understand the, the concern of, of a, of a Vice President Cordell. And then my, just to piggyback on that, the additional piece of that is, and I was just asking the superintendent about it, if we say, look, we want to go, we want to confirm this, um, which might just be due diligence, that's just part of, you know, we're, we're having our conversations and deciding where we're gonna land, is, um, you know, certainly an equity issue. Some people may be able to afford that, some people may not. Um, they still may be free in the community, and they'll know there are places where you can go and get a test. And if you want one, because tests aren't as hard to come by anymore as they used to be. But I think that should be part of our consideration as well. If we're gonna require that, and I certainly understand the thinking behind it, then we need to make sure that, um, cost isn't gonna keep, um, that poor, that poor student from being involved in, whether it's sports or whether it's band or whether it, whatever it is that may come up where they have some testing that's going on and athletics or, or, or activities, so. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go to, uh, Clerk Minetto, and then back to Trustee Thigpen.
Um, this may be kind of a silly question, but if a coach or referee has been vaccinated, do they have to still be tested weekly? Yeah?
That's a, that's a great question. And if they have received both doses of the vaccine, then they, um, would still need to get tested. Um, actually, maybe, maybe that's, I need to review that again. I know that if they've received both doses of the vaccine and they're within 10 days, um, then they would not need to be tested.
I, I, I see Dr. Lamarcus stepped up and, and from a commentary. I, I would, that being the case, I would recommend that they still may do that simply because research shows that if, even if you've been vaccinated, if you've received two shots, you still have the potential of being able to carry the virus. Um, and, and the, the, the research isn't, isn't solidly saying if you've been vaccinated, you cannot carry, which is why, even, even after getting to whatever, um, herd immunity or whatever we're looking at getting to, we're still being, um, being asked, uh, both statewide as well as federally to continue to wear masks, social, the whole mitigation efforts. Because even though there may be a certain level of a, a certain percentage of us that, that have had those, the two vaccines, we can still carry it. So I would recommend that even if you've, if, that we make a part of our program, even if people have had their second vaccine, because we're reckon, we're still asking them to wear masks and mitigate and social distance and so on, that they still need to be a part of the testing program. That would just be my recommendation. Trustee Thigpen?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, I want to touch on spectators, and the board has, has really heard a lot from the community on this. Um, I just wonder if it's possible, I feel like it's pretty safe, especially in our open-air sports that, um, you know, we allow some, some level of spectators, whether that's saying to every player, athlete, okay, you've got two tickets, you decide who's coming, no more than that. Um, and possibly engaging with our principals and our, uh, parent groups on maybe getting together some volunteers to enforce mask-wearing to, um, help, uh, with these efforts. So just something to consider, I think a lot of our, our families would appreciate that. Um, I'm not sure logistically or even, um, if there's any sort of liability concerns that we may have to consider, but just want to put that out there.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. We're gonna go to Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you. Um, I'll extend that thinking a little bit, and I support it. Um, yeah, I'm thinking a lot about, not only in athletics, but in expanding the opening of our schools. I'm thinking a lot about seniors. And I, I think, a thought that I have, um, I don't know if it's a good one or bad one, but I, I've gotta share it. Um, I would like to do something more for our seniors. Um, and as far as athletics, I would like to do something more for our seniors' parents, families. Um, I don't want to exclude families of, of juniors and sophomores, et cetera. Having said that, um, our seniors are gonna be gone very quickly and move on to other adventures. And I would like to make a concerted effort to build some memory for our seniors and for our families. And that's not only athletics, that's in theater, uh, any extracurricular activity that sometimes that's the reason students come back to school. And so I, I would like us to consider, um, having at least a discussion about how we could make that happen. I know there's impact, there is going to be impact. But think about it this way, I'm crossing my fingers for a fall full opening. Um, this might be a nice transition opportunity to begin to test some of those in, including, um, our seniors. And quite frankly, I'd like to, to open up our schools to our seniors, period, um, to include them in the schools, uh, on a choice basis so that, again, they can, they can have some semblance of normalcy, whatever that means, um, as they finish up their studies with Washoe County School District.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. We're gonna go to Vice President Cordell, and then Student Trustee Victoria.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to offer support for, um, allowing spectators into our athletic events. I do think within the governor's directives, there is a way for us to, to do this safely and equitably for all of our students. Students can populate a list, they get two spots, and they populate a list of which two people are gonna attend. And those people, those two individuals are allowed in. Uh, capacity requirements could be met, social distancing requirements could be met. I would, uh, I would agree about the seniors, I'm concerned about them being able to play, but also that families can't take part when many of these students have been playing the sport that they're playing for, since they were very young, and this is it, they may not go play collegiately. And so I do think there's a way for us to do this. I don't think it's going to be a free-for-all, I don't think it should be the gates are open, anyone can come in, the governor's directives have to be followed, but I do think there's a way for us as a school district to do this, to support our students. And then we're going to have to make sure and ask our families and supporters to follow the guidelines in place so that it can continue. And I have faith that they will absolutely do that, because I do think that there will be a gratitude that this is available, and I don't think anyone's going to want to do anything to hurt that, and I do think our students will benefit from that. So I do think there is absolutely a way to do this, because we've seen it done in other places at other levels of sport. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Vice President Cottle. Student trustee Victoria?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to add on to what trustee Thigpen said and Vice President Cottle said. I definitely agree with allowing spectators at the games, but with social distancing guidelines and all of that. But I think this, since we are virtually adding on to the spectators, schools can definitely benefit from recording the games and for people that aren't able to go into the games. And this would definitely benefit players by scouts being able to see them if all the games are recorded and those scouts can look at the students while they're playing.
Thank you, Student trustee Victoria. The only thing I'll add before we can go on to our next consideration, which begins to get us into transportation, is certainly if there is a way, I'm going to just add my two cents to, I would love for there to be an opportunity for spectators with some guardrails, right, around there. Again, it can't be as much as we'd like for everyone to come in, even at the collegiate level, there are still guardrails, some don't even have spectators still, and those that do, they have some guardrails. And I would like to see us take a look and see what would that mean. And I know that as I say this, that would certainly put a lot on individual schools, because it would really be incumbent upon them, I think as Mr. Shabondi said, to police the crowd, make sure masks are being worn and so on. It does help if it is an outdoor sport, you know, we're talking about football, but remember there is volleyball. I mean, that's a fall sport as well. We start thinking, I mean, yes, there's tennis, there's cross country, but they're still indoor, so that would still be a part of that as well. So we have to keep in mind that not all of the fall sports are outdoor sports. And so just keep in the mind what that might mean, and if there's something that can, and I know these are just things for us to consider, and these are things, and we know that there will be a plan upcoming as to what does this look like. And so I think this is the time for us as trustees to kind of throw out our thoughts and say, here are some things that we'd like you to take a look at, some things that we'd like to get there. I also think of, because part of it is depending upon how it looks in terms of opening schools, but fully opening schools, but allowing, because I know we're learning more about the challenges and that, but allowing the activities and clubs and so on. So if you're thinking of like a play, I mean, same type of thing, it'd be challenging to produce a play with social distancing, you know, but that might be fun for somebody to try to do, or a concert, or whatever, some of those same, we have to keep those same kinds of things in mind. If there's a concert at the end of the year, so finally, yeah, they could have one, then what does that look like? And when parents might come, if they're going to be allowed to come, again, spectators, social distancing, so it's a big piece of it. I mean, I would certainly love to be able to get there if we could, because, you know, kids have been out for a long time. And so any of those opportunities that we can give them, as you look forward to what kind of plan that might be able to be put in place, I certainly like to take a look and see what that might look like. And you guys may come back and say, it's impossible, and then we're going to talk about that, of course, but I'm just going to align my support up with those that say, man, if we can get there, this would be a place I think that we all would like to get to. Okay, we need to have a two-minute recess? We're going to have a two-minute recess? So everyone just hold where you are, we'll be back in two minutes, we are in recess. Okay, thank you for that brief unexpected recess. We want to make sure that we are in order, and at the recommendation of council, which absolutely certainly makes sense, is as we go along, and we're talking about various considerations, and the agenda calls for us considering relevant actions that may include a lot of these things. So let's take those, it makes sense to take the relevant actions as we go, instead of getting to the very end and then trying to backtrack, because our job is to give the superintendent some direction for herself and her staff based upon where we are now. And so since we're at this place, instead of moving on to transportation, we have other important things that are coming, let's spend this time here on athletics and see if there's any relevant action that someone would like to make a motion on. Oh, before we do a motion, oh, we have some public comment, yes, on this. We also got some public comment online for this, so we'll do that first, and then we'll come back to the board table. Okay? JJ?
The board received emails from Kavitha Iluga, Morgan Dusek, Kimmy, Julia Dyer, Margot Me, Will Harper, Lisa Cooper, Rachel Fisher, Lori Wilson, Jason Clack, Jessica Clack, Anonymous, Stephanie Robison, Sonia Sabatoni, Kristen Smith, Lynn Alt, Jana Anderson, Angela Metzger, The Johnson Family, Jennifer Jones, Paul and Jamie Evans, Michelle Guile, Megan Murdock, Rachel Aboud, Michelle Amunson, Courtney Hurlbert, Jana Rager, Margie Goforth, Veronica Koppel, Colleen Green, Laura Gingerich, Jennifer Suttmiller, Robin Womack, and Sandy Herman.
Thank you, JJ. So now we'll bring it back to the board to see if there's any relevant action the board would like to direct, make a motion, and see if we direct the superintendent. I see you, Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Take a stab at it. I move the Board of Trustees, direct superintendent to create and execute a plan to allow spectators to athletic events that is equitable to all participants and in compliance with the governor's directives. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by trustee Cottle, we have a second by trustee Thigpen. I will ask if you will consider a friendly to that, so it also includes activities, which might be if there is a play, or something like that, that would typically be expected. Same rules, same, and so on, are you open to that friendly? Okay, so we have now the motion would say that the Board of Trustees asked the superintendent to come back to the board with a plan to allow spectators at athletics, events, and activities, a plan that is equitable?
Yeah, so in my motion, because we have athletic events that are going to be starting before our next board meeting, it was to create and execute a plan that, to allow spectators to athletic and activities, to athletic events and activities that is equitable to all participants and in compliance with the governor's directives. And then how that is actually done, we'll just say.
Absolutely. Understand, I switched that around to come back, but you're right, there'll be a game by then. Yes. Okay, is it clear? Yes, we're open for discussion now, Dr. Nicolet?
Thank you. Would you read that again, please? Thank you.
I move the Board of Trustees, direct superintendent to create and execute a plan to allow spectators to athletic events and activities that is equitable to all participants and in compliance with all of the governor's directives.
Okay, you're clear on that now, Dr. Nicolet? Okay, there's a motion on the floor again by trustee Cottle, we had a friendly amendment to it, and it was seconded by Vice President Cottle, was seconded by trustee Thigpen. Any further discussion?
Trustee Church?
Yes, trustee Church, yes, sir.
I'm still here, hanging in here.
Oh, I know you're there, I know you're there.
I just, I wanted to concur on that, you know, my thought is, what I'm hearing by equitable is to the maximum degree possible. In other words, we want as many legal spectators compliant with the directive as possible. Thank you.
Yes, Vice President Cottle?
Yeah, the reason I added equitable is so that we don't have 10 people come for one student, the next student can only get one, because we have to stay within the governor's directives of capacity, so that it's equitable, so that all students will have as close to the same opportunity to bring in spectators. That means that maybe every student only gets two, so you can't bring five, but so everybody can have two. So that's my intention around equitable, to ensure that all students will have that opportunity to allow a spectator there to support them.
I think that's fair, and we can always modify it at the next meeting if we're not happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. You're going to say something, council?
Yeah, I just want to, do you intend the two to be part of the motion, or are you just saying that as an example?
I'm using it as an example, because I think it would depend on whatever the capacity allowable is for the governor's directives, and I'll leave that to superintendent with the schools.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. I was going to mention that superintendent just wanted to clarify to make sure we're clear, there's still a limit of 250 people at this point outside, so that would still make a difference if everybody gets one person or two, whatever, and that's us getting way too far into the weeds. But your motion included sticking to the governor's directives. And so that means, whatever that means within that, should that number change? That number changes eventually, but sticking to the governor's directives. Yes, Vice President?
Yeah, exactly. And so if, let's say, in April, the governor's directives changes either to allow more or less, then the motion is still...
Still good.
It's still good, we don't have to come back and do something else.
It's the governor's directives, again, and this is, getting into more than that will get us way too much into the weeds. I mean, our job is to create the guardrails, right? And this is what we're doing in terms of this motion. Did you have something, Dr. Nicolet?
Sure, I'll share it. I just popped into my mind is students, students wanting to go to activities, and I know you'll consider that, so I just, students as well as family members, friends, and the whole ball of wax that goes with it.
Spectator means spectator. Yep, within the governor's directives. Spectator means spectator. Spectator means spectator. Okay, looks like everyone's ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposition? Okay, the motion passes six to one. Thank you trustee Calvert. Trustee Church, did you vote? You're on mute, you're on mute, sir.
Affirmatively, I go to it affirmatively.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the motion passes six to one. I leave that, and if I don't hear the no, then it's yay. Okay, thank you very much, the motion passes six to one. Okay, and as advised by council, and I share with you, we'll take, in any relevant action that we like to take, to be in alignment with the agenda item, we'll take as we go. So the next area we'll get into will be transportation. Vice President Cottle?
Yeah, do we, do we need to go back then? Unless we're going to follow back up with academics, because it looks like we have a bunch of stuff coming, I don't, do you want to go back into academics, or do it at the end?
Well, my understanding is for academics, the plan will be forthcoming?
On the ninth.
On the ninth, they'll be bringing the plan to us, back to what, but as you said, we can't wait for athletics, because it's happening now.
Yeah, okay, I just wasn't sure if we want a motion on everything.
No, just any relevant action. And it isn't, that's not an action that we need to take yet before we have a plan, otherwise we're figuring it out here, and again, that's us getting way into the weeds.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone's clear, that's paying attention to this, that March 9th will be recommendation and action.
Yep, it will come.
Yeah, so just that people don't think that we're just kind of skipped over academics.
Nope, it will come, absolutely. I hear you. Yes, trustee Thigpen?
Well, I think kind of to your same point, I had one that we mentioned earlier that I'm thinking maybe I wanted to make a motion on, but I don't know if we want to go backwards. If I...
Well, let's do it before we go forward, so let's go ahead.
I'll take a stab at it. I'm not very experienced at motions yet. This would be around playground equipment. I'd like to motion to direct the superintendent to formulate and execute a plan to reopen playground equipment in our schools.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor about playground, surrounding playground equipment, is there a second? Vice President Cottle, there is a second, let's have a discussion. We didn't hear a lot about that from staff and all, I know there was some, I know there's, Mr. Shabondi talked about the idea being to open up more of that, but I don't necessarily know what that motion means. So I'd like, no, I know from your standpoint what it means. I'm sorry, I didn't say it that way. I guess I'd like to know a little bit more from a, what does that mean to a school? Or do we need more guardrails around that? It may be easier for some schools and others, if we can hear, if I can hear a little bit more, that'd make me a little more comfortable.
So deputy superintendent or Mr. Ernst, I don't know if you want to speak to this. It really is more around the individual schools, and it's really for timing as far as the guidance documents that we need to get out to the schools is really what it is. It's the guidance document that we want to make sure that we provide to the schools.
You want to just answer that then, Superintendent McNeil?
Yes, it would be the guidance document that we...
Sounds like you almost did, so...
To get out to schools, as far as opening up playgrounds. We had already talked about this within our COVID meeting, and it's something that we review, but we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to get the guidance document out, so that our principals have very clear direction on what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed.
So if I'm going to say this correctly, it sounds as though that is going to be happening, and it isn't a go forth and open up all the playgrounds, it's here's some, here's guidance, so that each school knows what is required for them to open up their playground. Does that cover what you were interested in terms of your motion, trustee Thigpen?
I think that's fine, because it's formulating and executing a plan to do it, it sounds like, right?
Okay, so does that mean you're withdrawing your motion?
Do I need to make a new one?
Nope, because it sounds like it's already happening, but we can, do we need to, it sounds like it's already in place?
Oh, then, yeah, I can withdraw my motion if it's already happening.
Okay, you're good with that as the second? Okay, then that means a full intention then, just so that we do have it on the record, the full intention is that that work from the COVID task force can continue to go forth, that there's guidance released to each school in terms of what's required for them to open up their playgrounds. Okay, everybody clear on that? We're good? We know there was a lot of public comment about that as well, and that's been taken, and I kind of figured because it kept coming up in playgrounds, but this way we know that we know. No, 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 it's to make sure, no, it's to make sure, nothing wrong with that at all. Okay, you've been waiting so patiently. Now we're going to get into transportation, and again, if there is relevant action around this, I think we probably will need to, to be able to move forward. We'll take it at the time, as we're having this conversation. Mr. Martin?
Good evening. First off, I'd like to say that it was a pleasure to follow athletics tonight, so, from that standpoint. Madam President, Superintendent McNeil, Vice President Cottle, honored trustees of the board, Rick Martin, Director of Transportation for the record. And we're here tonight to talk about the change. Ours is somewhat of a positive, from the standpoint that it's been raised from 50% occupancy on a bus to 66%, which is basically two students to a seat, which has increased our percentages of, I mean, our actual ridership of at least 10 to 12 students per bus, from that standpoint. And it's for all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. The other aspect that has been a bonus for us is that the time restrictions that were placed on us by the state and by the Washington County Health District have been removed. There are no more time restrictions for the occupancy on the bus. In the past, we had to have time restrictions up to like 15 minutes for two to a seat and things like that. That is not the case anymore. So, and that was confirmed with the Washington County Health Department on the 18th, the day we got the directive, I emailed the Washington County Health Department and then badgered them throughout the day on the 18th. So we got our response. So, from that standpoint, we are set to go on that. Now, at this point, I have Assistant Director Scott Lee with me tonight, and I'm going to turn over the details of what we are still going to do with the situation on the buses, and he'll take over for that.
Good evening. Scott Lee, Assistant Director of Transportation.
Is this mic on?
Is it? Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
Can you hear it now?
A little better now. Thank you, Mr. Lee, thank you for being here.
All right, some of the measures that we currently have in place, we require face coverings on all occupants, drivers, students, on the bus. We also have... We also have hand sanitizer available. The seat behind the driver, that is, there's a tote secured there that has disinfecting equipment, has hand sanitizer, has extra masks if need be. Gloves for the driver usually stores some gloves there as well. We have disinfecting, we disinfect the buses in between each run. We will hit high-touch surfaces, so if we drop a high school group of students at the school, then we'll disinfect it, hit all the high-touch surfaces before going on to an elementary school. Once it's back to the yard, then we'll do a more thorough disinfecting and cleaning. Also, we are running with roof hatches open for ventilation in addition to having windows down. They're all cracked so we can have a constant airflow there. If the buses do have air vents, those are open as well. So they can be quite chilly, they can run with the heaters on, but we have to maintain that ventilation. When possible, we will load students sequentially and we unload them sequentially, so there's minimal passing of each other. They are also in assigned seats and that's for the purposes of contact tracing. We can identify who was around a given student and we have that consistency there. Attendance is taken daily and turned in daily for every student on every single bus. It's extremely labor intensive.
Okay, and at this point, I'm going to move back in and talk to you about a couple of considerations. First off, it's not on this bullet point, but we did our assessments and if we do go to five-day-a-week in-person for high schools and middle schools, we will have at least 12 runs at this point based on assessments that will be double runs. 10 of those will be in middle schools, two of those will be in high schools. Now, we will reassess and see if we can make adjustments to ease that with changing stops and the like, but right now, that's our preliminary assessment. We also anticipate that with going back to, if you go back to five-day-a-week school learning, we may see an uptick in ridership on our buses from students that weren't riding before for whatever reason, just because they will be able to ride with their friends now that they weren't doing before based on different schedules and things like that. So, we could see an increase actually in double runs and not a decrease, so, just to let you know that. The second consideration is, and this is for consideration tonight for you, is that we have been in-person five days a week for elementary schools since day one. And with the governor's directive on the, that was implemented and started on the 18th, we can start 66% or two-to-a-seat transportation for elementary school immediately. Now, at this juncture, we aren't doing that because we are at 50% per board directive based on the governor's directives previously. So we are asking for your grace and for the benefit of every elementary school principal that is on double runs right now, that would, they would love you for it, is to ask that you would move forward and allow us to implement the 66% for elementary schools effective immediately and that would start on March 1st. Right now, we do have spring conferences going with parents and we don't want to interfere with that, but to move forward with the first for that aspect.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Superintendent McNeil?
So Rick, I just wanted a clarification. Can, can we ask for direction that would allow the board to make the decision for just overall 66% capacity within our school buses? Not, and not delegate it just to elementary school? And, because I'm just thinking of, of, you know, athletics or transportation or, you know, if we were able to get, you know, more kids into, you know, I don't know what level it is at this point in time because we haven't talked about it, but if we can just have it broad-based, would that, 66%?
Yeah, great clarification, Superintendent McNeil. So on that, yes, we would ask for direction on that for all of our buses, including those transportation pieces, including support opportunities like athletic events and things like that, as well as the return for the middle school, I mean, the high school and middle school, even if they maintain the current schedule, that we would still be able to be at 66% for them and two-to-a-seat from that standpoint. We would just effectively move forward with the elementary immediately.
Well, thank you, Mr. Martin. Another question that I have, and thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Another question I have is, as a board, as we consider what relevant action we may want to take, and he's certainly asking for some, is that do we want to perhaps make the decision to increase our capacity and say to be in alignment with the governor's directive? So therefore, if the governor's directive changes again, when it comes back out to 75%, they, he could go into that, like right now, he's waiting for us because we didn't have a board meeting yet to be able to go up to 66% and we could have gotten that down to one trip for those schools that have, that have double drop-offs now. So, because we know we can't exceed that directive, but if we have that, that in alignment, then that, so that may be, would that be more helpful for you, Mr. Martin?
That would be extremely helpful. We would appreciate it and we might even send flowers, so.
I like roses.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I like roses. Did you have something, Trustee Church?
I just kind of wanted to pay you back on what you said. I agree. Is it something that we would delegate to the superintendent like we did the last motion? Or would we just do what you said? And I'd probably want to be comfortable to make sure the parents knew what we were doing so they didn't find out the hard way that their kid was sitting next to another kid when they didn't know that. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Trustee Church. What I would say in this is, the last one, we allowed, because it was already in progress. And so there was no directive that was needed from the board. And the board put this in place and so it should be adjusted by a board motion to make it, am I right, Council?
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. You could delegate it to say we're removing that restriction that we had and delegate it to the superintendent. That's one way to handle it if you want.
It's still a vote, though. There's nowhere around that vote. And then, and I would say that as of right now, I think it's certainly important to let parents know what it is that's going on. And in some cases, we already have two-to-a-seat just for a limited amount of time.
Correct.
And so it isn't that this is going, this could happen, students have already been in a position where they may do that, but again, the window of time for that, which is now lifted according to the governor. But at the time, that possibility of two-to-a-seat was always there, but certainly notifying parents, it's always a good thing. And so we certainly leave it to staff to do whatever is appropriate for that. Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. My question was answered and I'm happy to make a motion if, if there's no other discussion.
Do we have any public comment on this, J.J.? No, please, Vice President Calhoun?
Okay, I move with the Board of Trustees, directs the superintendent to implement the governor's directives for transportation and as directives change, to continue to adjust as needed.
Thank you, Vice President Calhoun. Is there a second? Second by, Trustee Thigpen, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay, the motion carries. Let the record show that it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lee and Mr. Martin. Okay, we're going to move on to any relevant actions that may need to happen surrounding any nutrition considerations. And I see Ms. Leonca coming this way. Oh, you're, oh, you're standing there. Okay, we're going that way. All right, certainly the floor is yours. No, let's get your mic on.
Sorry.
Okay, there we are. Thank you.
So, good evening, President Taylor, Vice President Cottle, Superintendent McNeil, members of the board. Leonca Solis, Director of Nutrition Services for the record. So, when we start to look at the considerations of a model change around nutrition services, I think one of the first places we need to start is looking at the potential impact to our actual meal service models or what the meal period looks like. And the biggest factor with that is going to be our current staff shortages. And for those of you who are here in the fall, you probably recall that we just went through a pretty significant reduction in force. So you might be thinking, what do you mean, staff shortages? So let me provide some clarity around that. Since the reduction in force, we've had attrition, additional attrition. And in the current climate, we found it very difficult to fill those vacancies. So to date, we currently have an additional 33 vacancies on top of the reduction in force that we put forth in the fall. In addition to that, the reduction in force was made, or the furloughs were made to meet meal targets of 32,000 meals per day. And we're actually serving closer to 36,000 meals a day right now, so that's great. But again, the need for staff is there. We have recalled our impacted staff members and we've been quite successful with our fully benefited full-time staff. We've been able to recall, bring back 93 accepted positions back. Where we found difficulty is in our non-benefited staff, our staff members that work 4.5 hours or less a day. And we've only been able to bring back 43% of them. And the reasons they give vary, but the top ones are, one, they found other employment. Two, they are now caring for loved ones as their situations have changed. Or three, they want to go back to their exact home school, which we can totally understand, right? When you're working three hours a day, you certainly don't want to drive across the district to do that. So, there could be some of, you know, possibility to bring back the staff that would want to work just at their home school. But again, that would just be one piece of, of the group, right? Of the non-benefited staff members that we would be trying to recall. We have been working with, you know, HR as well and Ms. Ellison mentioned today the virtual job fair and we took part in that. So we are taking steps to try to restaff. But you know, this is a challenging recruiting season, even in a normal year. To try to get part-time nutrition service staff to come on board after spring break is quite difficult for us because it's a really short time for them to work and they're really looking for something a little bit more sustainable. So, I think all that kind of paired together, it would prove very challenging for us to be fully staffed to meet the needs of bringing back all of our hybrid learners. Next, you know, the types of service might need to be altered. So if you all recall, too, in the summer, we worked really hard to meet with every principal and set up a model that worked best for their site. And a lot of these service models included having carts placed in remote locations to promote social distancing, shutting down points of service, which again, kind of fed into some of the furlough decisions that were made, as well as doing some classroom deliveries. If we were to bring back all of our hybrid learners, we would really need to look at our entire labor pool and try to shift some staff around to utilize them most efficiently. And this could mean changes to those models. So it could look like us meeting with those principals that are currently having classroom deliveries and saying, you know, is there an opportunity for your students to now come through the cafeteria so that we could kind of streamline labor there? Is there an opportunity for us to bring everybody back through the cafeteria instead of spreading people out through, you know, in two or three different carts across campus? Again, to just kind of streamline those operations. So, we would definitely need to look at that. And lastly, all of that kind of feeds into then the impact on the number of points of service and wait time. So until we could get to adequate staffing levels, we could see, we very likely would see not all of our points of service open. And when we have that, then it's the very long lines, you know, that we see and the very long wait times. I have concerns around multipurpose rooms being very crowded, appearing very crowded and students almost getting quite discouraged, right? When they walk in and there's one meal period and it's, you know, 20, 30 minutes long and they see these crazy long lines. Because it would be, in essence, you know, almost double the students that they're used to seeing. So all of that could, you know, I think are considerations that we need to think about. Next, you know, additionally, we would have impacts on our supply chain. So when we shift volumes like this, it's very difficult for our suppliers to ramp up and respond. And we've already seen it just in the slight, you know, kind of 10 to, 5 to 10,000 meal a day swings we've seen over the years. They kind of get a little thrown off by it and we're usually able to accommodate that gap utilizing our federal commodities. We do purchase about 20% of the food items that we purchase are through our federal commodities program. But that program too requires us to place our orders six weeks out. So for example, right now, through March 15th, we can only change our May orders. So that really wouldn't help us for the rest of the school year to fill that supply gap. And so both of those things combined could result in some more abbreviated menus than our students are already seeing, which, you know, we hate to do. We've already had to kind of scale back the menus to make sure that it could be grab-and-go and quickly accessible and that sort of thing. So we would hate to have to scale it back anymore, but there, there could be that possibility out there. And, you know, I did want to, you know, with all that being said, I did want to make it a point to say that, you know, our vision and mission in nutrition services, you know, our vision is to provide access to healthy meals to all of our students within Washoe County. And our mission, the reason we do that, is because we believe in two things very wholeheartedly. One is that we are here to support the academic journey of our students. And two, a child that is sitting hungry cannot learn. So, I think that it's appropriate to say that, you know, it would be, all those challenges and considerations need to be considered, but should, you know, the hybrid learners be able to come back? I mean, that would certainly make it easier for them to access, access daily meals. So I did think it was important to kind of mention that, but it would be a challenging road to get there.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Any questions? She isn't necessarily looking for direction at this point. It's really more of, here's some things to be, that staff is considering as they compile all that they need before they make a recommendation back to us at our meeting on the 9th. Yes, Trustee Thigpen?
Thank you. Just a quick comment that I wholeheartedly agree that we can't just have a shock to the system, right? We have to make sure that every kid that comes in our building has a meal waiting for them if they need one. So, I really appreciate this presentation and your input on this as we make these considerations.
Of course, you're welcome.
Thank you, Trustee Thigpen. Okay, I think we're on to the next consideration. Ms. Solis, thank you very much. We're on to considerations regarding health and safety. Mr. Adam Cersey. Floor is yours, sir.
Hi, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Adam Cersey. I'm the Chief of Facilities for the school district. So this is the same slide that we all looked at on multiple occasions over the summer months and in all of those instances, we tried to refer to these elements to reduce risk and increase health and safety in our schools within the framework of a series of layers. For some of you who maybe weren't on the board at that time, you know, it really started before the students left home every morning in the form of an individual daily health screening. But once we've entered our schools, the ubiquitous signage that you see throughout all of our schools now reminding everyone to stay on a single file side of the hallway, stop, wash your hands, all of that signage, all remains intact. And specific, a little bit on this slide, we talked about the PPE. So, since the start of school, we've improved both in quantity and quality on the various PPE items that we stock and supply to our schools. Our inventory levels have been replenished even recently in additional items such as disinfecting wipes and other items that we have all become all too familiar with in our worlds. in our worlds have been present and available in all of our schools. In short, those layers remain strong, and we look to be in good position on those layers going forward. Another important layer on this slide that I wanted to highlight, again, maybe for some of you who weren't on the board in the summer or the start of the school year, includes indoor air quality. This is an issue that continues to be one of noteworthy attention and concern at a national level, but one that the Washoe County School District has with unprecedented exception for wildfire smoke, done and continues to do very well. All of our buildings benefit from very modern HVAC systems. Even our older buildings still have HVAC systems, which, you know, on a technical level, exchange the air within a space continuously throughout the day with a twenty percent fraction of that continuous exchange being made up with fresh outside air. What that equates to is that once per hour, all of the air in our classrooms and throughout all of our school facilities is being exchanged with outside air, something that meets a high standard for a health and safety layer from a national standard. So another layer that's on this slide that we've really continued to improve upon has been contact tracing and exclusions. So the district has worked very, very hard throughout this school year to continuously improve in partnership with Washoe County and the Washoe County Health District around that effort, contact tracing and exclusions. It's been a very challenging endeavor, but a necessary layer to contain the spread within our schools or limit it and reduce our risk further inside of our buildings. So the primary addition to this slide that was new since the fall centers around vaccinations. So we've heard about vaccinations at many of our previous meetings and again tonight, but I think it's important to highlight that or refer to it as a layer of protection. It is certainly fallible, but it is one that, as you heard, all school district staff who have chosen to will have had an opportunity to avail themselves of two doses of COVID vaccine prior to the end of spring break. So I think that's an important noteworthy layer. So with that said, of course, any changes to the in-person attendance would put a strain on these layers. While our facilities themselves, the physical facilities and the PPE supplies do appear ready to bear this strain, it is really the human resource elements that implement and participate in these implementation of these layers that would see the most strain. So I just wanted to highlight really the item around social distancing. We heard about earlier some of the complexities between the rated maximum capacity of a space, but the individual complexities around social distancing within a space. Every classroom shaped differently. It has different functions. It has different furniture that must be accounted for, kind of almost on a classroom-by-classroom level. And that is a burden that is borne primarily by principals and teachers, and certainly, as you heard earlier from the area superintendents, will have pinch points in any implementation. So it's a complexity to consider. Also, the contact tracing, I mentioned that exceptional efforts that we've put into that layer over the course of the school year, the strides that we have made to improve on that. But it is a very labor-intensive effort that will, one that relies significantly on the human element, and also a burden that falls disproportionately on our principals despite our best efforts to try and share that burden, and one that would, you know, see significant additional strain with any adjustments to the in-person dimensions of our teaching and learning. So finally, I wanted to use the surface disinfecting bullet point on this slide to draw attention to our custodial team. The school district's really entire army of custodians really warrants tremendous praise, persevering throughout this entire pandemic, you know, providing enhanced disinfecting throughout all of our schools, day in and day out. However, while we have not adjusted staffing levels intentionally or really had to scale back our efforts in response to the pandemic, you know, as you've heard from transportation and nutrition services, WCSD housekeeping traditionally has staffing-level shortcomings to our, and that's only been worsened throughout the pandemic for a variety of reasons, whether it's their own illnesses or just challenges that we've had in filling vacancies. So absences have increased and substitute coverage amongst our absent custodians has decreased. Certainly, any changes to in-person attendance or especially the reintroduction of after-school activities and athletics will further stretch these human resources even further. Now, custodial services have a limited ability to adjust service levels throughout the day, and we've made some of those adjustments throughout this school year, moving some of those evening custodians who otherwise would have to tend to after-school activities and cleaning up after athletics and whatnot to more of a swing shift to provide greater frequency of high-touch surface disinfecting throughout the school day. Those types of personnel or just resource adjustments or even service level adjustments could be considered to try to manage that balance, but I just really wanted to, you know, highlight the tremendous effort this team has put forth and note the additional burden that that would be placing on those individuals. So, you know, again, I wanted to cover all these elements. I note these not to express any fatal flaws, but rather paint a true and accurate picture of how far we've come and what position we are in, and also recognize the impacts that any change would cause really just solely from a facilities management standpoint. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Circe. Appreciate all the work that you and the team have done, especially from a facility standpoint, from an air quality standpoint, just all the tremendous, the big heavy lift it had to be. It absolutely had to be just to get us ready. Any other questions, comments? I don't think there's any relevant steps that need to happen at this time. So if that'd been the case, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you, Mr. Circe. Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here. Now, we're going to go on to consider some of the budget impacts. And I think, is that you, Mr., Dr. Lamarcus?
Yeah, it's me posing as Mr. Mathers. Mr. Mathers couldn't be here tonight, and really, there's not a lot that needs to be...
Oh, is Mr. Mathers on Zoom?
Yeah. Dr. Lamarcus, I am here. So thank you for covering for me.
That was a good job being ready to jump in with a team player, by the way.
He is. He is. Absolutely. Just to talk real quick, just to talk real quickly to this slide, just to follow up on Adam's points. I think you heard earlier today, we have ramped back up, purchased a PPE, and if we don't need it for the remainder of this school year, we'll certainly expect to use it next school year. Adam mentioned some kind of certain pinch points in terms of staffing. So that's certainly a consideration, although that might mean, in some cases, just overtime or additional hours versus actually attempting to hire additional personnel at this lead stage. So for, in all these cases, I think it'd be fair to say this is one time when the operational considerations here of a model change outweigh the fiscal considerations. We can certainly attempt to cover these costs within our existing budget, depending on the board's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Doesn't sound as though any relevant imminent actions need to be taken care of at all. These are just all the considerations going forward. One thing I will ask my colleagues to consider and see if this might be of some help, and anyone may ask this, I know many of us, as we visit schools and so on, and we know that more families just over time have been, you know, asking and wanting their child to return, excuse me, even before the governor's directive came out, that we can, that we could decrease the social distancing from three feet to, from six feet to three feet. It's always been that at middle schools, but then also in addition to high schools. Would it, I know you're going to put a plan together and come back to us in a couple of weeks, because that was, because that was our directive to save three feet in elementary school and then six feet in middle school and high school, but the governor's directive has allowed that middle school and high school to go to three feet. Would it be helpful if we loosen that here now and just say, make the social distancing also in alignment with the governor's directives? So that even over the next couple of weeks, if that's helpful to somebody, if that's helpful to a school, if it's helpful to a classroom, as principals consider how they're moving, would that be helpful? Did that make sense? Or did I leave anybody behind?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and I would ask President Taylor to allow staff to bring back plans on the ninth, because what we want to be very careful about is that there is very specific guidance given to our schools. We've been very careful about providing detailed guidance to our schools. So for example, with playgrounds or health, we have a reopening plan. And so it would help to have a consistent guidance document that our schools would be able to look to and to refer to at the central services level.
Okay. So you recommend that we wait then for the plan? Or that schools just have to wait for the guidance document from you? What's your...
I'm recommending that you allow staff to come back to the March...
Waiting for the plan? Okay, gotcha. Okay, Vice President Cottle?
Yeah, just want to make sure I'm clear. I think what you were saying, President Taylor, was similar to other actions we've taken to replace previous board actions. We made it more flexible to the superintendent to adjust. Our current board directive is that middle school is six feet. And so I think what President Taylor was saying is that in advance of creating plans that we would see on the ninth, essentially saying here tonight, we want to reverse or change the six-feet directive to be in line with the governor's directives.
Right, that was...
And so it doesn't necessarily, we're not making decisions tonight. It's just letting you know in advance that we would like you to think about the governor's directives, which is three feet. And so it's just loosening that in advance of that meeting. So the planning, you know that going in. That's how I understood it.
And then, I guess what I'm hearing from the superintendent is, we may do that here, schools still need to adhere to what they were until the schools themselves get different guidance from central services, from central administration?
Yeah, and I'll ask Deputy Superintendent Byersdorf to come up, because I want to make sure that we're just very, very clear. We've been doing so well on making sure that our schools have very specific guidance, and I don't want to put our principals in the position where there's differences among schools. And that's an equity issue as well, too.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Again, Deborah Byersdorf. And you may remember, trustees, back in July, when we had the conversation, when you had the conversation and made the ultimate decision that we were going to stay with three feet at middle school, there were some middle schools that could have brought more students back with the six feet, and not all schools were the same. And I remember having that conversation, but us also, I think, all agreeing that, and your ultimate decision, was that we need to be consistent across our schools. So I agree, you know, two more weeks to come back with a good plan to all of you. But I think the strength of what's made us as successful as I think we have been is just the consistent guidelines that have been put in place for all of our schools. I think definitely has supported what I, you know, is our belief around equitable access and equity in schools. So that would be my recommendation, stay where we're at right now and then bring back the plan on the ninth.
Thank you, Deputy Byersdorf. I see Dr. Nicolet and then Vice President Cottle?
Thank you. And I absolutely agree that it has to be consistent throughout the district. Otherwise, there are confusion and anger and, you know, safety issues. Without trying to get too deep in the weeds, this plan that's going to come back on March ninth, can we hope that it's going to include expansion of more students having in-person, more consistency, maybe for the, like I said, the seniors, eighth graders? I know that's getting in the weeds, and you maybe don't want to, you haven't decided yet, but I'm hoping that we're not talking about something for the fall.
I would say this, the plan on the ninth is about this school year, not about the next. We haven't even gotten to next school year yet. So I can certainly say that. I don't know what will be in it, what staff will recommend, but I do know it's about how, what do we do this school year as the governor's directives have shifted?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Cottle?
Yeah, and I'm, thank you, Madam President. I'm good with everything that's been said about the plan will be done, we'll see it the ninth. I do think it will help in the planning, though, to know that the board tonight supports the new governor's directives. Without knowing that and having the action, is the plan around six feet or three feet? Because the current board action is six feet. Like, we didn't say board, we didn't say governor's directives last summer, we said six feet. And so if we don't change that tonight, the district's essentially going to go back, and I'm not saying we change it to go in place right away, we essentially lend support that, to bring, to formulate plans around the new governor's directives, or else the planning would have to be with that unknown. Because the board on the ninth says, well, we want to keep it at six feet. If the plan is saying three, then it's no good, we've got to come back on the thirtieth. And so I do think there is value tonight in essentially lending support, and I think we might have to turn to our chief general counsel and make sure the motion is worded that way, essentially supporting the, or directing the superintendent to consider current governor's directives in creating the plan, so that it is, and that's currently three feet. I hope I'm making sense.
No, but so what you're saying is that you're thinking, perhaps making the motion saying that in anticipation of the plan coming back March ninth, asking staff to consider current governor's directives?
Correct, because our current board action is six feet. Governor's directives is allowing three. I just want to make sure we're clear so that you know...
And that way, they know they can go beyond what the, we have guardrails in place right now, and that way, it's very clear to staff that they can go beyond those guardrails to where the governor has drawn the line.
Correct, and then through that action, we'll know where the board feels. We won't have to wait and hope.
And that would need to be a motion then, again, to get back to another relevant action based upon this. So I'm waiting for a motion. Vice President Cottle?
Okay. So I hope I get this. I move the Board of Trustees, Director Superintendent to consider all current directives from the governor in creating a plan to invite more students back to schools that will be heard on March ninth.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Okay. Yes, yes, please.
Do you intend the motion only to be about coming back to school or to create a plan that's consistent with the governor's directives all the way around?
Well, I guess all the way around. My intent is to essentially let the superintendent know that the board is, would be supportive to consider plans that follows the current directive of three feet, because if we're not, then any plan that she comes back with has to consider six feet, and I would make the argument that there's no plan, because that's what we're doing now.
Right. I just, I'm asking because I got the impression that you wanted the superintendent to follow all directives, but you've so far only limited it to attendance. So I would suggest that if that's your goal, to reword the motion, something along the lines of the superintendent come, you know, the board moves, that the superintendent come back with a plan that is consistent with the governor's directives on school reopening or something like that.
Okay. I move the Board of Trustees, Director Superintendent to consider all of the governor's directives in creating action plans to be considered by the board on March ninth.
Diane Nicolet, second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Vice President Cottle and second by Dr. Nicolet, that the new plan, the plan coming forth from staff, there are the first meeting in March, will consider, will take into consideration all of the new, all of the directives outlined in 038. Okay? Any discussion anymore on that? All right. Yes. Wait, hang on just a sec, Trustee Church. Clerk Menedo, and then I'll get to you, Trustee Church.
Can we change, can we put a May in there? I know, that's weird, but it's... I, I know that's weird, but it just, it's like.
Where would you put the May? Just.
Well, say it to me again.
Well, actually what it says, just this might help you, it says to consider all the governor's.
How about may consider?
No, we want it to consider, doesn't mean they're going to do it, but it.
Okay.
Consider means say, keep that in mind. It doesn't say you have to do what it says.
Well, okay.
That's my, that's my understanding of what consideration, just say, just, just, just consider all of it. Did, did I capture the, the spirit of your motion?
Yeah, because we're not considering a plan now. We're essentially giving the superintendent a heads up that we will support the current governor's directive. So then she knows going into the next two weeks versus finding out on the ninth that we might have to now do it again on the 30th. Hope that makes sense.
It doesn't mean it has to go that far, but it means it can. Do you have any, do you have anything else on it? Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, trustee church, you were next.
Well, I was just going to say I, I support the motion. I'm hearing loud and clear from my email that people say it's time to go back, let the kids go back to school with the opt-out option for now, but, so I do support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee church. Doctor, I thought, no, that, okay, trustee take pin.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. It seems like the way it's set up when you say current guidelines, meaning if next week the governor says more, you know, there are more changes, then that will then be considered in a plan. So as you said, we wouldn't have to come back again in four weeks and change things again, right? Exactly. Because I do think that previous board actions that we took last year, we said specific to what the directive was. And then when he changed it, it was, we have to go back and then change it. And our actions tonight have been more consistent with essentially giving the superintendent the authority to adjust our plans based on the governor's directives and not have to ask permission for, for everything.
So it should not be based upon directive 038, just based upon governor's directives? Okay, so we have, we have that clearly stated from a motion standpoint, not based upon directive 038, but based upon governor's directives.
Just in case that is.
Yep, there may be a shift. We don't, there may be shifts.
And I just want to make clear, just from trustee church's comment, that we're not saying we're reopening schools right now. We're saying for the plan that is going to be coming on March 9th, we're considering all current directives up to that point.
No, we're just, we just, we're asking staff to consider governor's directives.
Exactly.
As they put this plan together to come back.
All right, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that was out there. Thank you.
Yep, that's, yep, this is only about a plan. You, you, you good with that, JJ? You got, you have your hand on your head. I'm not sure what that means.
No, absolutely. I'm fine.
You're good, okay.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like we're clear, but as clear as mud, maybe? No, it looks like we're clear. Okay. Tim, no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Opposition? Okay. The motion is carried. Let the record show it is unanimous. All right, thank you, everybody. That is everything on that agenda item. It looks like we got through this very important stuff. Looks like we got through all of that. Okay. And now we'll move on to our student representatives report. Student trustee Victoria.
We are currently, as an SAC council, we're still just planning what's our next, our future plans. And next meeting, I'll talk about how the town halls are going to affect this and how they basically added to what our goal is going to be for the next, rest of the year.
Fantastic. Thank you. Love it when the student, student, as vice board, you guys are always busy. It's fantastic. Thank you very much, student trustee Victoria. Now we'll go to Dr. McNeil for a superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Taylor, members of the board, Chris McNeil. So this week, we're really excited that this Friday, we will have our hug topping off celebration, which is just so exciting. I think President Taylor was over there today signing the, the topping off beam and Adam Circe and, and group have been over there. And so we're looking forward to signing that and finishing off the topping off ceremony on Friday. And then just quickly, a huge shout out to all of our schools that participated in the We, the People. Unfortunately, this year I was not able to be a judge. I was at a vaccination clinic helping out there, but just a huge shout out to Reno High School, who is actually going to nationals and to Mr. Clark's class of We, the People. And then also to Incline Reed High School and North Valleys High School for all of their hard work. That is a tremendous lift for our, our high school students, but they were able to do it. So congratulations to all those schools for We, the People.
Okay, council, your mic is on. Were you, were you acting? No. Okay, that was a mistake. All right. Well, thank you for those reports. Before we close out, any public comment?
I do not have any.
You don't have any other public comment? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for, for your time. Look, it's 9:15. Somebody write that down. Our meeting is adjourned and we will meet back, we'll meet in two weeks. Actually, we have a policy committee meeting first. We have a couple, a policy committee meeting on the second and then our next board meeting is on the ninth. We stand adjourned.